Good evening, everyone. Welcome participants to the planning board meeting of February 27. At this time, I'd like to call the planning board to order Ms. Creighton.
Here.
Ms. Lucio.
Recording it.
Yes.
Ms. Foley.
Yeah.
Mr. Olney.
Here.
Ms. Gilbert.
Here.
Kenny is not here. Thanks. If I were at a forum tonight, I'd like to remind all board members, gals, that they have to be recognized by the chair if they wish to speak. And this meeting is being recorded.
Can you just hold on one second? I just see mine automatically. Automatically signs me in with the... Sorry. Great, thank you, sorry about that.
So the planning board would like to acknowledge receipt of correspondence. Lorraine I. Olney, February 20 and February 16, John J. on 215.
Well, there was a couple more correspondence that are on here.
Four correspondence, Gail, you missed?
Not that I'm aware of. I didn't receive any more than what you stated.
I think Christina had one from Timothy Gates. And I actually responded to Mr. Gates via email and sent him directions on where he could find the... He wanted to see the updated zoning articles and he wanted to understand the rationale for all of those. So I sent him my staff memo. I sent him locations where he could secure the zoning language.
And there was the... From an attorney, Michael Walsh, on 213, that discussed the MBTA zoning change as a planning board function. He had concerns with the task force and the municipal separation of powers. That came in on the 13th.
Didn't we meet on the 13th?
Yes, but it wasn't acknowledged, I don't believe.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we have a scheduled public hearing at 6:30. Before that, we'd like to have the board finalize the proposed changes or the public hearing warrant. And with that, I will turn that over to Ms. Creighton.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, I don't know if this is me echoing.
Is it coming through this?
Yeah. So are we going to take public comment out on the... For items not on the agenda?
I think so.
Do I think that...
It's on the agenda.
Okay, great, I didn't have the agenda open. So we had four things that were follow-up from last meeting, specific things. The first was I was to summarize the changes that we had talked about for the senior housing and send them just to Chris. And he was to make the changes in the opposed bylaw, which he did. And it was put on SharePoint on Thursday with the track changes and an untracked version. The second thing was Laura was going to... Let's echo. Laura was going to look at...
Perhaps 1623 can help. Coming from me.
We're getting an awful lot of feedback from over here, which makes it very difficult to hear what some members of the committee are saying.
It might be me.
It's coming from the side, it's absolutely crazy.
Well, it could be me. I'm now signed on. I think I have mute. It was not on the phone.
Two? Because we did the speaker on the microphone.
You might have to help me.
Try it now. Is it still left away?
Yeah, through there.
Okay, because I just logged out, so it's not me.
See, I just logged in, so it could be me and mine automatically...
And I wasn't in my...
...joined, but I think I unmuted. Oh, sorry.
You want to check this one?
Check me. Yeah, check.
On the bottom of Zoom, on the left-hand side, your microphone cross-out. Why?
It says join audio as an option, so I assume that means I'm not joined.
You're not connected here.
Not connected.
I don't want...
Just click on it and mute.
No, it's kind of... It's not just mute.
I'm speaking over here, but the microphone is showing up.
Sorry. We'll do this.
It still sounds like it's coming from hers. You have to join without audio.
I'm showing you.
It has to be joined without audio, even if you're muted. C minus, join if I'm not.
I'm not muted. No, it's not the mic in here, too.
Sorry folks, technical difficulty. I don't hear the echo now.
Oh, talk some more.
I don't hear an echo now.
Oh, I don't hear it either.
And you already put dinner or rice in this?
It may be on the... It's maybe on the...
Right, Mr. Creighton, you're on it? On the collars.
So Sandy, can you...
I...
Okay. Sorry, we had four things. So the first was senior housing changes. Chris did that. The second was Laura was asked to look at what the site plan review and special permit requirements were for various scenarios. And she did and said that they were mostly the same, but as we had said, they are slightly different. She did not give me like a detailed list. But what she also did is send me... Suggested that other towns create regulations, which I think Betsy is going to probably, in conversation, recommend that we remove all of the numbers of plans and whether they're stamped and all of that from the...
We're not even talking about that right now.
Well, but all I'm doing is saying the follow-up, that from last meeting, that if we were to remove them from the administrative section, we could create regulations that do that outside of zoning. That was just...
That's not where I was going with that.
Okay.
Can you say that again, please? You're still getting the feedback and it's very difficult to hear what the people are saying.
Okay. I'll try again. All I'm saying is that's what Laura reported, is that some towns use the procedural requirements in adminis... This is really kind of a discussion for the board's benefit as a follow-up.
Is everybody muted?
We're trying. We've had...
John, are you muted?
There you go.
I'm not on this call at all.
I'm not on. Okay.
I'll turn off everything, the little ones I can find, and it's not muted. There's an echo.
A phone?
If somebody else is not muted on the broadcast.
Room five monitor, will that help?
That's this, that's not hooked up to any audio.
Can you tell everybody to...
Did you turn that up or down?
Mute? It's muted. It's joining... Somebody has joined with their audio.
It was not up or down.
What says you're unmuted?
It says unmuted, but I can't even... I'm not even...
Who?
I'll try.
There you go. I might do it. I might do it.
Let's try that. Thank you. But I don't know if people can hear us.
Yes.
Thank you. Let's just check to see if someone in the...
Can you hear them?
...audience can hear us. Greg, can you hear us?
Can hear you fine, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay. The third thing was that Betsy was going to check with town council about a number of issues in the administration changes, which I believe she did. And we have the changes recommended by town council reflected today. And the fourth thing was that Christina, you were going to get back to me with... So we could incorporate it with the fees.
I searched and I compared to others municipalities that updated this, and this is the language that they've been using.
Okay, thank you. Those are the four follow-up things from the last meeting that I had in my notes. Besides, then we were going to discuss the... Particularly the senior housing proposed changes that Chris had before and make sure that we had sort of agreement on the big issues before or knew where we were going to go. So we can do that or... So should we do that? Betsy, do you have any other updates or do you want to explain?
So we'll be going through each of the bylaws, correct? Because I don't see... So for example, like the site plan one is not consistent, so we have to make sure it's consistent throughout the bylaws.
That's correct. But we can... So let's... That's to me... To me, it seems to me that a site plan and the special permit requirements, like is it stamped by an engineer and those kinds of things can be made. We can agree that they should all be consistent, but do we need to spend our time now going over them? I thought we would go over the senior... We had agreed we would go over the senior housing changes. We can take... We will at some point before we finalize this go through them.
Yeah, so we're not going to vote on it?
No, correct. I don't... Well, we can decide what we do, but it seems to me we want to vote the warrant, not necessarily the motions tonight. The motions on the warrant. However, they're two different things. So Chris, do you want to just walk us through the... Or the summary of the changes that we agreed last time on the senior housing or that we proposed? And there's a summary of them at the front of the material. Can I have it? You have it in your packet. I'll start with. So this is just... This is the... On the 22nd, we talked about the draft. And for the board, there was a red light copy in our shared packet, but for the public there was a... Online, there was a version. It just said the following changes since February 22nd were incorporated. One is to reformat the way the table in Section 4 will be presented. The second is clarify that independent housing for seniors can only... Would be allowed in the LCD if it's part of a larger senior housing facility and include assisted living. The third clarification was that senior housing must include one occupant over 55 and no resident younger than 18. Fourth is a clarification, the maximum floor area for unit types are in gross square feet. And that the requirements for open space is clarified with reference to the open space required for cluster conservation. We might want to talk about that one. And then additional provision included encouraging adaptive reuse of existing buildings for senior housing. And I believe we also took out the previously suggested historic designation section.
We did.
We did. So those are the changes that Chris incorporated that we had identified at the end of last So do those reflect the conversations that we had? Yeah, go ahead, Mary.
So on the... In the summary up front, it says number four, it says changing to gross square feet, yet in the body of the document, it says net square feet.
Okay, we should change that.
I believe we want to use... Well, gross is going to include stairwells, stairs, hallways, floors, all of that. So yes, probably gross.
Actually, we should be using net square feet, because if we use gross, the spaces will be so small.
That nobody would ever...
No one ever wants to rent them. 900 square foot gross.
Okay, but at least to Mary's point, we had talked about changing it to gross, so we can decide whether we want to change it back.
Sure. Whatever we do, it should be consistent all the way through.
Okay, so for now, I'm going to put as we're... For the form, we're going to have gross.
Yep. And then we can discuss that later.
I had a question on 9.4.4.5, because there was a word inserted saying setback from residential dwellings, all new buildings. New was not in the prior version, so that's a difference because obviously it's saying, you know, pre-existing doesn't have to conform to this.
So was that... Say 9.4.4, number five?
Yes.
Ah, okay. All new, but doesn't it say setback?
All new buildings.
Isn't the sentence saying all new buildings?
Sure, having existing building that's in the... This is non-conforming. It just simply requires the ZBA action on it as well.
Right, so...
So all new buildings would have to require all setbacks.
So it... So existing buildings, though, would be non-conforming, and so are we clear in this bylaw that that's going to go to the ZBA for non-conforming?
Yes.
Can you show me where that is?
Same section.
Number 15, conversion of existing structures.
So...
Any non-conforming must be referred to the board of appeals for consideration under Section 7.
So I had a question on that, because Section 7 is, at least currently, is special... Is administrative.
Then renumbered in the past meeting, number 7.
So number 7 is...
It should be number... It should be section. It should be 12.
No, no, this is non-conforming uses.
Oh, right, non-conforming uses, yeah.
So non-conforming uses was renumbered to 12.
To 7.
7.
To 7.
So should we say 7.2?
I think any part of Section 7 would apply, so...
Okay, because there... You know, 7 is variances for special permits.
Okay. That is possibly going to need a variance.
Yeah.
So, well, this is... I mean, residents, these are the questions.
Maybe it would be helpful for the board to hear also what Betsy heard from town council on the admin section, unless there are any other comments that follow-up from Chris's And we'll have time to talk about these, but I'm trying to just get the housekeeping from last time.
I think there is a... There's... I have a concern linking this bylaw to the residential conservation cluster bylaw to define open space, because that is not a clear definition of open space in the residential conservation cluster bylaw that would apply to this, since that bylaw requires five acres, it requires different setbacks and different things. So I don't know how we can link the two.
Okay. So that's a discussion point. Okay. Betsy, you want to summarize for us what the changes were that the town council recommended? Just so we're familiar with them.
So legal counsel went through the changes. Went through the administrative section of the bylaw. And the most significant changes were... There was a section that was added about complaints, which she indicated was the building inspector under Mass General laws afforded a lot of power. And so she felt that having that in there was overkill and it might conflict with Mass General law that the building inspector had. And so her comment was if, you know, the building inspector was not being forceful or responsive or whatever, then that should be addressed in that manner. But the complaint language was not appropriate. And there were... The next major area was the associate members at the bottom of page two and on page three. And basically, she suggested that you take it right out of Mass General law, so... Which is what I did in the revised language. The next major change was the powers. She felt that it was really inappropriate to have all the references to subdivision. You're mixing apples and oranges. It's zoning, it's not subdivision, and subdivision is a separate entity.
No, who does hear... I mean, doesn't planning board hear subdivisions?
So they do, yeah. If you look at other...
You do, but this is a zoning document.
I know, if you compare them to other communities, they lay them out. So ours are going to be blank and the ZBA is going to be defined.
No, it's not going to be blank. I mean, there's language in there, and she recommended that it be removed, so... Right, we can discuss it. So the next major change was the provision in Mass General law that allows the planning board to hire consultants at the developer's expense. There's... There needs to be a clear process for that. And so she recommended referencing it. And then what would happen is the board would adopt rules and regulations on how to deal with 4453G, which is the special revenue accounts and the hiring of outside consultants at the developer's expense. The next issue was site plan review. We had a fairly lengthy discussion. A lot of communities... Apparently, the special permit granting authority also does site plan review. So basically, a number of changes were made to specify that all of the special permit granting authorities will issue site plan review. And if the project is a by right project, then the planning board, that's under the planning board authority.
Wait a minute, I'm not sure I understood. Does...
So are you saying would they follow this, our site plan review bylaw? So CONCOM or Selectment Board?
No, no. The CONCOM is not a special permit granting authority.
So just the ZBA?
So the zoning board and the board of selectmen are special permit granting authorities.
And the planning board.
And the planning board. So everybody would, you know, follow the same process. And when we adopt rules and regs, we can consult with both of those boards and see if they want to abide by the same regulations. And if it's by right, it's... Or Joe Vermin, and it's the planning board. And there were a couple minor changes, but that was... That was kind of it.
Does the regulations to hire a consultant, you have to be the planning board?
That would be... Well, the planning board can certainly do it and then talk with the board of selectmen and the ZBA. My understanding is the ZBA really tends not to do that. I've been in situations where there's been some kind of odd situations where, when I was in Drakot, for example, the planning board was asked to assess an ABC operation, which is asphalt, brick, and concrete, and it's a processing plant. And so they basically needed somebody to come in and kind of estimate quantities and things like that. So that was kind of a specialized engineering form. So we had a process by which planning board would get three estimates, they would hire an outside consultant, we would get estimates for doing that, it would be put in a special revenue account. As the bills came in, the bills went out to the developer. If the developer contested it, then we held off. If he didn't contest it, we'd pay the bill. And the same...
It seems that we've done this already, I think.
Right, yeah. The school had...
We've done... No, but we've done it too.
Yeah, the planning board had the school... For the school projects, both the school projects had a stormwater consultant that was paid for by the school project.
So... But what legal counsel suggested was establishing... Holding a public hearing and establishing a very specific process. So I know some communities, for example, they don't hire... They don't get three estimates or they, you know, so...
Okay.
What a question.
What company was it?
It wasn't Bronx, it was somebody beside Bronx, yeah.
So Mary has a question.
So a couple questions. So the town council recommended taking out the complaint section. I would like to recommend that we put back in then what our current bylaw says with enforcement requests, that if the building inspector is requested in writing to enforce these bylaws against any person in violation of the same blah, blah, blah. So that's in our current bylaw, which was taken out in this administrative section. So perhaps we could talk about adding it back in.
Put on the list. It's the original 7.2. So, thank you.
And then it looked like in town council's letter, they recommended different language for planning board associate members than what was added, and I'm just curious why.
She kind of gave the short version. The longer version was she asked me to take it out of Mass General law, what was in Mass General law. So what was in accordance with Mass General law is in accordance with 48, Section 9, two associate members of the planning board may be appointed when the planning board has been designated as a special permit granting authority and the planning board consists more than five members. The two associate members may be appointed by the planning board for three-year terms. And she notes that that's what... Well, that's what the board voted at the last meeting, that the planning board would appoint the associates. She has indicated it's a town policy, so anyhow that... And so that note that's at the bottom of page one and top of page... I'm sorry, page two and three, that note would disappear. And then once the provision for filling the position of associate members have been made, the chairman of the planning board may designate an associate member to sit on the board for the purposes of acting on a special permit application in the case of absence, inability to act, or conflict of interest on the part of any member of the planning board. It's right out of Mass General law.
Okay. So the one change there is that previously we had that it was an... We had the word was called alternate. And the Mass General law is associate.
Right.
So...
And then just one more question. She correctly referenced our general bylaw does not have the planning board description in there. Were you able to send her anything? She does say that she'd like to review it, and since we... She said, "I have concerns about this section as the planning board should have already been established in accordance with General Law 4181A."
Right.
So in our general bylaws, we don't have any write-up for the planning board.
That's true.
So were you able to provide anything to her or...
What... I can't invent the law. What she suggested is... Is pretty much the language. The planning board has been established in accordance with Mass General law 41, Section 81A. Planning board shall consist of seven members selected for three-year terms.
It's most disturbing.
I believe that we looked into that because previously, and we found some like handwritten... If I'm remembering correctly, there was a handwritten town document that established the planning board.
Yes.
Yeah, Christina's got that.
Yeah. And so I think that was to... You didn't...
My understanding is that in the general law, when I went and looked at the general law, Section 1 is missing, Section 2 deals with the ZBA. And Sue Brown and the town clerk apparently went hunting to try to figure out what happened there, because clearly something's amiss on the fact that something got deleted. So...
I think it goes back, because the prior town clerk, and I have the language at home that she was able to track down from, you know...
Yeah.
Decades ago. That either that gets inserted in the general bylaw or we come up with something new. And then my last question is, town council was going to weigh in on what 12.2.2 meant. What does conviction mean?
As I recall, that's the sec... She asked me to eliminate that. 12.2. 12.2.
It hasn't now been eliminated. I don't think it changes the meaning.
It's a 12... It's the first line of any person violating a provision of this bylaw upon conviction shall be fined $300 for each offense. upon conviction shall be fined $300 for each offense.
Yeah, I mean, basically what she said is upon conviction, the town has to go to court. It's very difficult to, to actually fine people.
So she recommends deleting it?
Yeah.
So what about 12.2.3, which is fines as well?
She, she didn't, I don't think she said too much about that. I think she said that the fines could be increased. But the fact is, is that the town has to take somebody to court to get any type of fine. And it's a rarity.
Okay, so we don't currently collect any fees?
I don't have the answer to that.
So I think it's important to say something because any person violating this provision, I mean, upon conviction, is the building inspector saying that this is not in compliance. So unless you have some kind of language, there wouldn't be a fine.
Right.
So.
So maybe we can, um, take that as a, as a follow-up.
I think we were just trying to figure out what that word conviction means.
It means found guilty though, right? So maybe the building inspector makes the determination that there's a zoning violation and that would trigger it?
Yeah, that would.
Written.
We know what conviction means. I, my, I was just trying, what is the town process for that? I have no idea. So, I think, yeah.
We're probably not going to solve that tonight.
I mean, I think what happens is the, the building inspector, if he has a couple of problem cases, he goes to the town administrator, he goes to the Board of Selectmen and says, I want to move, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, I want to move forward on taking this to court because it's, you know, a problem. So, um, I don't know how many cases that happens in. I can think of a situation in the ABC plant in Drakett where the building inspector was about to take the, the ABC plant to court. And then they came back in at the pushing of the, um, of the building inspector and legal counsel. And we ended up kind of resolving it through an amended special permit. So there wasn't any conviction, there was a correction made.
So are you saying that our building inspector doesn't have the authority to fine anyone?
It has, there, it has to go through litigation.
Greg, do you have any comments to help us clarify that?
Ah, yes. So, um, I think one of the desires of, of changing the bylaws was to give the building inspectors some authority to, to ticket people. He currently does not have that authority.
Yeah, I mean, that was one of the first intents. Okay.
So I think that would be a discussion that, that we could have with council to go that route. But, but currently the route is through litigation only.
Okay. So that's a good follow-up. Great, thank you. Um, any other, uh, follow-up from last meeting from, from the hour?
Okay. So at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing on upcoming amendments to the Manchester by the C zoning bylaws. Public hearing notice that we will notice and advertise in the cricket on February 10th and February 17th. Copies of the full language of each of these articles are available to Town Clerk's Office and at the library. Modifications include, number one, amendments to the administrative section of the zoning bylaws, Section 12. Two, addition of adult entertainment, new section 8.6. Three, amendments to the existing accessory dwelling unit bylaw, Section 9. An addition of a new senior housing bylaw, new section 9.4. The public hearing process will be as follows. Vice Chair Sarah Creighton will give an oral presentation of the four proposed zoning changes. Sarah will remark and present on the amendments to the accessory dwelling units and the amendments to the administration section. Interim Town Planner Betsy Ware will also have some remarks on this section. Interim Town Planner Betsy Ware will present on the addition to the adult entertainment bylaw. And Chris Olney will present on the addition of new senior housing bylaw. Sarah Creighton will moderate the public discussion period. Public comment period will then be closed and the board will discuss the comments received and decide on any changes based on public input. Once the proposed amendments are presented to the public, is invited to participate with questions, cost comments, testimony, et cetera. The public participation on Zoom is asked to use the raise hand feature and wait to be recognized. Public is asked to respect all participants, whether you disagree or not. No negative personal innuendos or attacks will be tolerated. Please keep your remarks focused on specific topic issues being discussed. Please refrain from repetitive question, repetition of questions asked or comments made previous. So everyone has the opportunity to present different points of view and/or information. Repeat speakers will be given a chance to speak after all persons wishing to speak have spoken. I'd now like to take a vote of the planning board members to open the public hearing. So there's a motion to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Foley?
You. Oh, yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Thank you. I would like to have Vice Chair Sarah Creighton give a presentation of specific details of amendments to, to the administration section of zoning bylaws. Well, I think you're going to give an overview first.
Right, okay, great.
So I think you have permission to share.
Those in the room, the slides are on the screen.
Leave behind you.
Hi, you. You're going to have to turn your chairs. Welcome to chairs. We'll give everybody a moment to turn around.
Don't want to block anything.
Don't worry about it. Here, take this one. Mr. Gates, can you, uh, do you want to see, turn and see the slides or are you all set? The slides are behind you. The slides are behind you. The visuals are on the screen. A little awkward, I'm sorry about that, but. Okay, so welcome everybody to our hearing. Thank you for coming, both on Zoom and on, um, in person. And as Ron said, we're going to run through, um, a presentation and then take on all of the changes. And then we'll take questions. And we're doing this for two reasons. The first, the most important is that this will be, this is being recorded. And so it will be a, for anybody who can't attend tonight, they'll see it in its entirety without it being broken up by comments. But we will, rest assured, we will take comments. One thing that is important for everyone to recognize is that this is, um, we are going to take comments on four zoning changes. This is not about the MBTA, um, zoning changes. There'll be plenty of opportunities for input on that. And this is not a hearing about the self signaling or any other special permit. So again, there'll be opportunities for public input on that. So just, it's important to know that zoning establishes the uses and what's called dimensional requirements in the town for land use. And it's based in case law and state law. Special permits are an important part of our zoning tools. And they are, um, special cases that are laid out in zoning that can tighten or give input or change restrictions when deemed to be in the public interest and in the interest of a few other things, which we will enumerate a little bit later. Our zoning is a little bit like a wildebeest. It's been cobbled together, um, over time with many changes. And the changes have, each one of them have been, um, well-intentioned to try to, um, address a particular problem or opportunity. And the board about four years ago, um, undertook a massive efforts to try to clarify and reorganize and remove redundancies, um, of that, of the bylaw. And I think we've come a long way toward doing that. We had, uh, we've renumbered the whole section, there's a whole new table of contents. All those changes that were done in, uh, the fall have just come back, by and large, with approval from the Attorney General. Is that correct, Betsy? And so we're in the process of having a new, uh, reorganized bylaw, ready for, for everyone to be able to use and reference. And then the master plan identified a number of issues that require zoning changes. And so we are chipping away at those. We got slowed down by COVID. We wanted to, um, bring these forward as long ago as, I think, two years ago. And then with COVID, it was an outside meeting. If you recall, that didn't make sense to add, uh, complicated issues to a outside meeting on the football field. And then, um, subsequent meetings got, got delayed. And so we did put forward, as you know, a large package of things for, um, the fall town meeting. And some of them, uh, all of them that we got through passed. And so we're still chipping away at them. And we're talking tonight about those things that might be on the, um, annual town meeting warrant. So, um, those that we are talking about, and we'll make a decision about whether we're going to move them forward after we hear from tonight and, and assess them, are a subset of those that remained, um, from those that we presented in, in the fall. The first is a revision of the administrative section. It used to be called sections numbered, section seven, it's now section 12. Removing some outdated requirements for the accessory dwelling units, otherwise known as ADUs. Regulating adult entertainment, which currently has no regulations, and a new, uh, bylaw proposal for, um, senior housing. So we'll take these one at a time tonight and then take comments. We'll take them as a group and then we will take comments at the end. So the first is a revised Section 12 called Administration and Procedures. So you do have a handout. And a nearly up-to-date version is available on the, um, website. It may not reflect the, the most recent changes that Betsy just ran through, but I don't think the intent is any different. The old section was confusing and also, as we just were talking about, neglects to describe the role of the planning board. The new section describes the roles and powers and organizational framework of the building inspector, the zoning board appeals and the planning board. It adds a provision for appointing associate members for special permits only. This may be the most substantive change, um, in the proposed administration and procedure section. When we have special permits, um, if a, a member is out sick or, um, otherwise unavailable, they, um, can only miss, I believe, one meeting of a special permit. And sometimes these special permits might go on for many meetings, they get continued. And so, um, also if a member has a conflict of interest, they're in a butter to a property that is subject to a special permit or any other financial interest or potential financial interest, they must recuse themselves. So, um, we're volunteers here and it's possible that we, um, might not always be available for a special, lengthy special permit. So the state law provides for, um, appointing associate members for the purposes strictly of special permits. And the planning board chair, uh, is responsible for, um, indicating if an associate member should, uh, listen in on the, um, special permit. And we voted last time we met that the associate members would be appointed by the planning board. And then lastly, um, this section has the procedures and criteria for reviewing special permits and site plans. We strengthened them and simplified them. One of the things we did in November was we passed a new, uh, what's called Section 6, which is the comprehensive look at the criteria for special permits in Section 6. And this section sort of go, uh, hand in hand. So that's the first, first change that we've proposed. The second change is the modifications to an existing accessory dwelling unit language. So Section 9.1 defines accessory dwelling units, and requires that they be issued with, by a special permit by the zoning board of appeal. We do not propose to change that special permit requirement. Interestingly enough, um, I looked at the zoning board of appeals applications between January 9, 2018 and May 2022. There was not a single application for an accessory dwelling unit. I know everybody's going to say what's, there were a number of, um, applications for the employee housing under Section 4, but there were no.
There was one on Lincoln Avenue that was approved.
No, that was, that was not, I looked it up. It was a employee housing.
No, there's both, there's one of each.
Okay, so maybe it's been used once. But, uh, according to the records, I looked at, not one, but maybe one. Very, very rarely. So the current, when it says old, it, it means the current zoning bylaw requires that all accessory dwelling units require a special permit by the zoning board of appeals. We don't plan any change to that. They are allowed in districts A, B, E and E. And we don't propose any change to that either. But it does require that they only be in houses built before 1984. And that requirement was put into place in 1987. We don't know the exact, nobody, you know, the intent. I'll come to that in a second. The site, the, the other requirement is that there be a double lot size, um, except in District D. So if your lot size is 6,000, well, that would be District D. Um, if it's one acre zoning, you would require two acres in order to be, um, to have a special permit. Our proposed change is quite simple. It's to change the home age to homes that are at least two years old, meaning they've had an occupancy permit for at least two years. And our rationale for that was that if the provision for a house built before 84 was put in in 1987, they proposed a, the, the supposed intent was that it be in existing housing, not when you build a new house. So if you've had an occupancy permit for two years. So we wanted to try to keep that same intent, but make it kind of, uh, so it, it's not a static date, but that it, that it revolves. The second is to remove the double lot requirement. And the third is to reduce the minimum parking from three parking spaces to three parking spaces from four parking spaces. So really only, um, three changes to the existing ADU law, still keeping the special permit requirement. And that is, uh, different than what we proposed, one of the changes we proposed in the November, uh, package that we proposed. I'll turn it over to Betsy Ware, our interim planner, to summarize the proposed adult entertainment regulations.
So as indicated on the slide, um, adult entertainment is, um, protected by the Constitution. It's considered freedom of speech. And, um, most communities have some form of adult entertainment bylaw and location by which it can be located. In this situation, the planning board has decided that it is allowed by special permit in the LCD district. It, it can be regulated, um, as long as it's not totally banned or prohibited because it is freedom of speech. And, um, there's concern that without regulation, the town is vulnerable to unregulated adult entertainment, um, going into. entertainment going into the community. So there was a regulation proposed for last fall's town meeting, and I've actually written several adult entertainment regulations and bylaws. And so it was a one-page document, which seemed a little light to me, so I ended up taking a crack at it, and I drafted something, kind of option two, for the board to look at. And basically, it was taken right out of Mass. General Law and various applicable laws, and the board felt that the definitions section was a little too graphic. So what I did was I took the language in the definitions and basically referenced the definitions. So the definitions are not in the bylaw, they are in basically Mass. General Laws. So, and then I added some additional language to give some criteria for the special permit. And so for example, this type of use is not encouraged to be near daycare centers, or near schools, or near churches. And so there is some very specific criteria. Age, you have to be over 18. So trying to develop some criteria. So legal counsel reviewed both drafts, both Option One and Option Two, and felt that Option Two, which had a little more criteria in it, was probably the better way to go. So anyhow.
The other thing, thank you. The other thing, that, one of the things that is not the subject of this hearing or of this zoning change is any change in where adult entertainment would be allowed. Given what we've published for this public hearing and the subject, we wouldn't be able to further restrict where adult entertainment establishments could be within the LCD or change them from the LCD to a different district. So whether, so we're not gonna talk about that tonight, and if somebody has great feelings about that, we'd love to hear from you in the future, and that could be a subject for a future hearing with the, but the where adult entertainment is currently allowed is already established in Section Four of our bylaws. Great, next, senior housing. Chris?
Okay, I want to start off by describing what senior housing is and what it is not. What it is, is housing which is restricted to people 55 years and older. And in fact, this new bylaw would require at least one occupant of senior housing to be 55 years and older, and have no permanent occupants younger than 18. What it is not is, are the large Brooksbury villages and assisted living facilities that we see across the region. It could be, but it doesn't have to be. There can be senior housing properties as small as three or four units. They can be as big as 80 units. They can provide personal care services and meals, or they can be just independent housing. So there's a whole range of facility types that would be considered senior housing under this bylaw. The other thing I want to point out is that Manchester, surprisingly, does not have a senior housing bylaw. And that is unlike all the other towns around us and across Massachusetts. Why we haven't done it, I don't know. It's surprising because our population is much older than most cities and towns. By 2030, I believe, a third of the population is gonna be 65 years and older. So we are an older community, and we don't have the kinds of housing, smaller, less expensive housing, easier to manage housing, that seniors want. And so many of our most treasured citizens in town have to move out because they want to downsize, and there's no place they can go. They need personal care services, and they have to go to Danvers or Beverly. So this is what this bylaw is trying to address.
Great, you want to describe what the-
Oh, so yeah, so one important thing about senior housing is that it would require a special permit, it's not a by right development. So every proposal for senior housing would become before the planning board, and would have to meet specific criteria and certain design standards, which would, the process itself would sort of limit the size, the scope, the number of facilities that would be developed over the years. So, but instead of trying to dictate exactly what we think a senior housing facility should be and where it should be, we'd like to open it up and have them allowed in every residential district, as long as the size, the design fits into the local neighborhood. We want these to be part of the neighborhood fabric, not something stuck out in the store.
Just go through this or not? So, so just to, this table gives you a sense of what the issue is, as Chris said, the oversight is by special permit for all of them. We proposed it in all of our districts. The minimum lot size and the dimensional requirements are as required by the districts, but could be increased by special permit. Where it's not just one unit, but it's multi-units, we have limited the area, maximum area, we're having a debate about whether it's net or gross, so if you have thoughts about that, we'll be happy to hear them. It's 1,200 square feet, for two-bedroom, a one-bedroom at 900 square feet, and a studio would be 600 square feet. The intention here is to keep them modest in size, because that's what the master plan said was one of the goals of the housing. And there's, age restricted would be among the requirements.
One question people have is can we require them to be affordable? And the answer to that is no, unfortunately, state law doesn't allow us to do that. They could be affordable, and as part of the special permitting process, we could have tell a developer to make some of them affordable, but we can't require it as part of the special permit, or, pardon, excuse me, as part of the bylaw.
You want to talk up this for me, too?
So just to show you how the special permit would control these developments, there are a number of criteria that the planning board would have to address in awarding a special permit, including the design standards that are, we recently approved in last November, social, economic, and community needs, traffic and safety, adequacy of utilities and public services, neighborhood character, scenic view sheds, impacts on the environment, climate resiliency, and the potential fiscal impact on the town. So each of these would require a specific finding by the planning board in granting the special permit, that in each case, the benefits of the special permit would outweigh any impacts. We think that would give the town adequate protection, so we don't have any flawed developments. These are the, this next slide shows the specific design standards, which includes outdoor lighting, noise generation, impacts on topography and clearing of vegetation, site development standards to preserve the natural features of the site, pedestrian vehicular access, aesthetic compatibility with the neighborhood, landscaping plans, utilities, security emergency systems, like emergency call systems, and consultation with the fire and police about each project. And finally, a fiscal impact, which for a larger project might involve the fiscal and financial feasibility analysis, so we could really understand what the tax revenues would be, and what the cost of the town would be in terms of services. Fortunately for senior housing, there's very little, if any, school students generated, so that takes a big potential impact off the table.
Great, thank you. The other thing, just in our discussion before we started the public hearing, we talked briefly about the planning board in special permit review is able to have outside experts weigh in at an applicant's expense. So for example, if, in any of these, if there was a traffic study needed, we might ask a traffic engineer to assess a project and to give us advice, so just to sort of circle that back.
And one final point, we do encourage existing buildings to be used for senior housing. This could include church buildings, large mansions, there are all kinds of buildings in town that could be repurposed very well for senior housing. They would require, some of them, if they're non-conforming, would require review by the ZBA to make sure that the proper special permits and variances are granted, but it's something that would improve the character of the town, repurposing some of these older buildings.
Okay, great, thank you. I just want to point out that even if you're not over 55, you will be someday.
And you probably have parents.
Chris, I have a question. One thing that you said, that this bylaw does not allow a Brooksbury-type development.
No, it allows it, it doesn't, it doesn't require, it's not-
But you said it doesn't.
I'm sorry, I misspoke, I'm sorry.
Okay, and I think a lot of people may not have, or if they did not attend the fall town meeting, the definitions of senior housing, as per the senior housing definition, includes every type of senior housing that you could imagine. So I don't feel like we're providing that definition to people, so I don't know where they could reference to find that information, it's clearly not on the website. So senior housing includes assisted living, continuing care, independent living facility, long-term care facility, a general senior housing definition, and senior housing facility. So I think this is a very broad, if not senior housing, bylaw.
It's meant to be broad, that's the intention.
So that, so thank you for clarifying.
But I think you cannot reference this, and no, it's broad, my point is.
It is broad.
Thank you for clarifying that the senior housing refers to the new Section 12 definitions. So we're gonna, I'm actually gonna stop sharing the screen so that we can see each other, but we'll first take up administration, and I'm gonna ask the people, raise their hand if they're on Zoom, and we'll, those of us who are on the computer can help me see people. Please wait to be recognized and state your name and address clearly for the record, and keep your remarks short, and try not to repeat something that's already been said. Sue Felbrook is gonna keep a bulleted list of the actionable items for us, so when we close the public hearing, we can make sure we have heard and act on any items. So I'm gonna stop sharing this for now, and I'm gonna ask the people in the room to maybe turn your chairs now, so we can all see each other, just for a minute. Thank you. Sorry for- Okay, I'll try to go back and forth. I don't see any hands raised in the room, so I'll start by unmuting George Davis. George, you have your hand raised?
There we go.
Sorry, this is Lisa Bonneville, I'm George Davis's wife, 23 Woodhome Road. I would like to add a 10th item to your list for senior housing, and that would be ADA compliance at every level, parking, structure, everything that's required for senior housing.
Yes, of course, yes, it is in there, sorry, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa. It is, it is one of the provisions in the proposed bylaw already.
What do we do with senior housing or admin?
Oh, no, sorry, we're, yeah, sorry, thanks, point of order. What we're gonna do is, thank you, Lisa, but we are gonna take comments first, just on the admin section, otherwise we'll be all over the place, things run. So first, we're gonna just take comments, if you have a comment on the administration section and want to speak on that, I'll start in the room with Mr. Gates.
Tim Gates, 2 Desmond Avenue. I looked at the paperwork here, and I see that the select board is listed as a potential gratter of special permits. Under what circumstance would they be involved in a growing bylaw?
Under Mass. General Law, under Mass. General Law, the, there are several special permit granting authorities, and it's basically the Board of Selectment, the Planning Board, and the ZBA. Those three entities can all grant special permits.
I'm not sure if the zoning regulations grant have the select board as a special permit granting authority, but in the future, they might, and so defining that now makes sense, I think is the rationale. Okay? Hold on, I'm gonna go to the, to online, I see a handout from Steve Hay. Is that a comment about the administration section?
It is, thank you for taking the question, so I just want to-
Can you state your name and address, please?
Sure, sorry, Steve Kelly, 355 Summer Street. I have a question about whether, what happens when somebody doesn't follow the permit process? So you, Sarah went into detail about the limited number of ADU permits that were pulled, and yet you've, in the past, highlighted how many non-compliant ADU units there are. So does this new administrative section detail how the town deals with non-compliant residents that never applied for a permit and just went ahead and made changes? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So, correct me if I'm wrong, either Rag or Betsy, the planning board is not the enforcement arm, we have no enforcement powers, it's the, the building inspector is the enforcement arm, and so a non, an elite, I think they've been called elite ADUs or other, other things, it's not a definition that we have, and that's up to the building inspector, if something.
So for example, if you, if there were a complaint, you have every ability to put that in writing to the building inspector, and the building inspector is required within 30 days to respond to that.
So at least in the past, perhaps it's changed, the building inspector indicated that he was not responsible for doing that.
The building inspector under, under state law is a zoning enforcement officer. So if there's a zoning violation, he should be tasked with overseeing compliance.
So it's not, it's a state law issue rather than a zoning issue.
Right.
Yeah, okay. In the room, yes, thank you.
Katerina Gates, School and Desmond Avenue.
Can you just speak up so that Gail can hear you, because she's a-
Katerina Gates, School Street and Desmond Avenue. I, I know my husband earlier asked about the select board. A select board, anywhere you participate as a member, primarily the persons who get involved are knowledgeable of what they have to deal with, what they are going to deal with. How can you make sure, if you're asking a permit for something that they're not aware, they have to ask the zoning board, or they ask a special engineer, to hire someone, to give them their advice? So why aren't we asking people who have nothing to do with it for structures, special permits? Because if it's for liquor and stuff, I think everybody can decide freely.
So I think your question is- So I think your question is what, how would a applicant?
Do they have permission to become, to be, not permission, but why are they allowed to be at large?
The special, the select board?
To be, to be, you know, able to give permits when they don't have any knowledge.
So I think that, yeah, it's a good question. So I think that there are two parts. There's defining the special permit granting bodies, which are defined by statute. And then giving those, assigning the special permit responsibility to one of those three entities. And in our bylaw, we assign some of those responsibilities to the zoning board of appeal and some of those responsibilities to the planning board. In a future, someone might amend the zoning bylaw and grant, and have the select board have a particular special permit granting or authority. In our bylaw right now, I'm not aware that we have any, that the select board has any special permit granting authority. But I think it's one of those, you know, in tidying up our, our bylaw, it's a good process.
Well, and if a process came out, or a new use came out, that it was felt that it was appropriate for the Board of Selectmen to take, take that responsibility than they would. I'll give you an example. I used to work in the town of Drakeett. And the Drakeett Board of Selectmen, they made, they granted special permits for restaurants, for earthmoving, for, I'm trying to think of what else. The restaurants, though, it was kind of interesting because, because they issued the liquor licenses. It was a process by which you could go to the Board of Selectmen and you would get your, you know, you would apply for your special permit, and you would apply for your liquor license, and it would be one hearing. So it was, it was done in a manner to basically condense the time period that somebody was before the board.
I hope that this would not bring more trouble to the town because some people might oppose the opinion of the select board, and then you'd have to go back in another board and claim again. But they were not really, roughly given permit or not given permit, welcome litigations and so on. Do you get involved in more trouble than what we can afford?
I don't think, I think that, that's, that's not likely in this situation.
I mean, the select board has a huge number of responsibilities under mass general law. So don't underestimate them.
I don't underestimate them, I just try to save the town from getting into more litigations and things.
Greg, do you have a clarification for us?
Well, I was gonna comment more on the building inspector process.
Thank you.
But in, in terms of the current discussion, you know, I, I think you said it best that it's really a placeholder in case in the future that there's a decision to give the select board a special permitting authority.
Okay, and then on the building inspector?
On the building inspector, I wanted to just emphasize that any, any action or non-action by the building inspector is appealable to the ZDA. So that is another avenue that, that all residents have. If they feel that either an action that the building inspector took, they don't agree with, or that if the building inspector did not take a particular action that the, that the person felt was appropriate, that too is appealable to the ZDA.
I'll just give you, the, all of the building permit, a list of, a summary of all building permits by month is on the town's website. And it's fascinating reading. Okay, Sandy.
Hi, I'm Sandy Rogers, 82 Old Essex Road. I just wanted to comment on, I think that it's a good idea that the planning board have alternates to be used for appropriate circumstances when there's a conflict of interest, et cetera. So, so that's good. On the other hand, I, I do not believe that the planning board should by itself be able to appoint those individuals. They should be elected officials, just like any other planning board member. And if not, then an alternate type of procedure where 100% of the planning board needs to agree to it, plus a review by, say, the, the town main board. I'm blanking the name of it, I'm sorry. But I, I really do believe that it should be an elected position. There should be rules around that those individuals need to attend every single meeting proceeding and during the, the process, et cetera, et cetera. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Greg, you have another, your hand up still?
Yeah, we, we, yeah. I was just gonna follow up on what Sandy's comment was. I think it's, it's a strong possibility that, that an associate would be a prime candidate for replacing a vacant filling of vacancies. And the, the process for filling vacancies is a joint vote of the Board of Select, the select boards and the planning board. And so alternative to having the planning board appoint would be to have, it'd be a joint appointment of both boards, just, just like the vacancy was filled. And, and again, my rationale here is that it's likely that an associate would be in a good position to, to be a full-time planning board member if a vacancy would occur. So it may make more sense to have the position, the associates filled via a joint vote of both boards.
Right, I mean, I think that, you know, the town can determine whether they, you know, it's a very important type of decision that can impact a lot of people in town. So there might be people that believe they should be like alternates that are voted on. But yeah, something to, to consider there, thank you.
Thank you. I guess I'd like to also point out that the associate members have the opportunity to, at least in my opinion, you might have somebody who has a lot of engineering expertise, who might be well-suited to help us with the engineering portions of special permits, but doesn't want to understand the intricacies of zoning changes or other fun things that we do. Okay, Jonathan.
Yeah, just to follow on that, I, I agree it should be a very independent appointment.
No, you meant not.
Well, John Keith, 8 Victoria wrote, the, perhaps one consideration would be, the, one of the runner-ups for the election process would be the, be deemed the associate rather than making an appointment process. So that way, the public gets to weigh in on it. So rather than running for associate, you, if you, if you lose, you can, you know, the top loser, the second in place, I should say, would be, would be the associate member.
Thank you for that input, yes, you're.
Yes, Jonathan first, 8 Blossom Lane. Again, just, I'm just gonna speak on what Sandy did, Greg, and Jeff. So again, according to the general law of Massachusetts 40A, that we're discussing having associates run on board too. This is an elected position, we've mentioned that. I think it's very important that it's elected for voting privileges. I mean, we've never had this. Has there been an issue, why we need to bring this up now? We've had a planning board in Manchester for forever. Are we foreseeing people recusing themselves in future projects? I mean, are we foreseeing that there's gonna be issues that we need associates to step in? It just seems, I'm just asking, it's like, you know, I've run for planning board twice, and I understand the, the depth of this. And my, my, I'm just curious as to why now we're asking, I know it's under mass general law, it's been there, it's not a new general law. Why now? And is there people foreseeing that they're gonna recuse themselves, that we're gonna need a quorum, and we're gonna need these associates? Thank you.
So we just had a situation with the burn dump, where we had one, one person resign and one person recused herself. So we had five people and we needed all five votes.
But that's one out of how many years? So that's why I'm just saying, like, was it so imperative, this one decision, that we need to make a drastic change to the board?
It delayed the special permit because it was hard to get all five in.
And there, you know, there's, if I can chime in, there's another problem too, which is if three people weren't there, then the special permit would be granted automatically under state law because we couldn't act on it.
But this hasn't changed, right? This, this is, this is no different than years and years and years.
Okay, wait a minute, let's let him finish.
Sure, 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 sorry, Chris.
Just because, just because we haven't done it doesn't mean it's a good practice. The ZBA does it also. This is just an opportunity to do something better for the board.
I think also, let me just also say, I don't think we are doing it in anticipating any particular situation. I think it's just a good practice, and it's one that other towns do, and the ZBA does. So, and, and I think Chris's point is probably the best thing. If three members were incapacitated or unavailable and had to miss more than one meeting, is the issue. Then the, the special permit is constructively granted. That means that they, if the time elapses 60 days or nine.
Or you can't vote.
And you can't vote, then they, and they don't agree to a continuance, the special permit would be granted constructively.
Can I just follow up?
So, yes.
But it's, the ZBA is an appointed position, and the planning board is an elected position. And that's the importance for me, because if somebody has to recuse, and this person that's been appointed as an associate is taking that position, they're getting that vote. And they weren't elected by the town. The people on this board have been elected by the town. So I just, I love the ideas that Greg said, boards maybe bring in the associates, maybe the person that doesn't get elected, but was on the ballot and maybe came in second is the person, because I, I don't know. It's just very important because this is an elected board, not an appointed board.
Okay, thank you. You have other clarification?
Yeah, no, just, I mean, you asked if any board members foresaw recusing themselves. I don't see that for myself. I do also like the recommendations of elected. And I think we can utilize Zoom now, so it, it would be less likely that members wouldn't be able to attend.
Let's just hear from the public, we'll be, have an opportunity to evaluate things. So, Becky.
Becky Jakes, 22 Forster Road. I had a question about the, the associates or alternates. And typically with, with associate members, that's been a joint board and select board decision. I'm just curious why the planning board felt compelled to have it, not a joint decision.
Christine, do you wanna explain why? I mean, you were quite articulate about why you felt that it should be planning board and not a joint appoint at our last meeting when we voted this.
And it was a unanimous vote, except for the chair, right?
Only Laura voted.
Laura, yeah, this is a five to two vote.
If I recall correctly, it's pretty much the sentiments that have been expressed in the room tonight. I mean, we are seven members elected by the public. And if this person, these two people are going to take on a job of someone's incapacitated, then it should be the board that's elected to do that. I don't think this is an individual board decision, I don't think it needs to be a joint board decision.
And is that how it's done, if I may? Is that how, you, you all mentioned that there are other towns that, that do this. Are they appointed by the planning board, just a board, or is that?
In my experience, which is roughly 35 years in municipal land planning, in a lot of the situations, it's, it's been an appointed board. And basically, either the Board of Selectmen or the town manager would appoint the associate member. In the towns that I've worked in, where there's been, it's an elected board, I've seen an elected position, I've seen an appointed by planning board and, and Board of Selectmen. So it's.
So I think the other thing is, we are an independent board, right? We are independent from the select board. So if we are going to propose that two alternate members be part of this group, I mean, it should be an independent board decision.
So we've heard some input that people would like to see elected, some people would like to see it be the runner-up or that, that, and do you have a specific recommendation that you want, you, do you feel strongly one way or the other?
I, I do, I actually feel strongly that it, it be a joint board as, as an appointment. That these are, if they're going to be appointed, that it should be the joint board.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess then in that comment, can we just make sure that Ms. Jakes is speaking then as a select board member, not as a resident, correct?
I am speaking both as a resident and my opinion as a, a select board person.
Thank you.
I do not speak for the board.
Okay.
I think the question is just asked frequently, so I think we just need to clarify for the record.
Erica, you had a question or comment?
I'm looking at, I think, six board members who are here tonight. How many of the board members that are here tonight began their service on the planning board as an appointee? I believe, I think, or three of them.
You did.
I did.
And Laura and Sue.
Christina did.
Yep.
So one, two, three.
That's interesting. Is that true, or is there more, less, that accurate?
Oh, Laura was too.
Laura was too.
Wait a minute, was I was, I think I was too.
No, you were.
You ran.
That's interesting, thank you. I guess I did, I don't even know. Yeah, thank you, that's an interesting point, thank you. Okay, any other comments on the administrative section? We have, still have a lot to get through tonight, so. Anything on, anybody have their hand raised? Anybody on, online on the administrative section that I haven't seen? Seeing nobody, let's talk about the, the three proposed modifications to the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. Those being the only changes that we are talking about making to the accessory dwelling unit. And the only changes, because of the scope of the public hearing, that we can discuss, are those three changes. The change of when the house was built, the, reducing the lot size requirements, and the parking requirements. So I'll take any comments, if you have any input on that. Yes?
Kevin Leach, 33 Summer Street. I noticed that you're suggesting that you reduce the number of off-street parking spaces from four to three. You're adding an additional dwelling unit. Why would you reduce the off-street parking requirement?
Can I add to that? The current, the current zoning bylaw requires for a two-family house, three parking spaces. So we don't think we should be penalizing much smaller accessory dwelling units. For being accessory, they should at least meet the threshold of the two-family. That's the current.
That's the rationale.
That's the current.
I, I just think that the town needs more off-street parking spaces rather than fewer, especially if we're adding additional dwelling units.
So these are generally very small units.
They have a car.
They'll have a car, so that's why.
They may have two cars if it's two people, two adults.
Okay, so let's, so you're, you're giving us the feedback that you would like to have us strike that, that change?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, and maybe even add, instead of going down spaces, add spaces. I mean, you're gonna have visitors, you know, where are they gonna pack? An emergency, where will the cars gonna go?
Okay, thank you for that input. Other comments? Mrs. Gates?
Katerina Gates, School and Desmond. I assume we're still talking about these MVP at downtown zoning, you know?
No, we're not.
It's in general.
No, we are talking, the only thing we're taking comment on right now is the modifications to the accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, but that's for all the dwellings in the town? That it might come for applications for.
For an accessory dwelling unit under section 9.1.
We, we moved from town, I think back 30, 40 years ago. And we live in a dense area. And when we bought our home, we bought it because it was on a corner, so we had only two sides of neighbors. But we had trees on both sides, on two, I have that four sides, and couldn't see a neighbor. We had 60, you know, tall trees and 11, 30 feet tall trees. But the algae, the hemilag algae virus terminated all of them. And we're the only ones who planted trees again and trust. We have a home where the two of us, we used to have two cars, and we have one, now we have none because I was totally almost killed two years ago. And so, but we have two homes in our family. And we have space to park, I tell you, six cars between the two of us. So we can park all parking cars. But most of our neighbors don't have parking. They have three or four cars, some of them, because they have their children living on the lawn. And we come home sometimes and we cannot find parking in front of our home. So I understand the problem with Mr. Lees, who said that there are people who have a lot of cars more than their dwelling, you know? So I understand the problem with Mr. Lees who said that there are people who have a lot of cars more than their dwelling, you know, and members. So I understand the problem. So if we eliminate, make the parking a smaller number, we will have a bigger problem downtown than we already have somewhere.
Thank you. Shannon Erdman, online.
Hi, Shannon Erdman, forty-one Walker Road. Quick question on the ADUs. I'm a little confused. What is the rationale behind going from a double lot to a single lot? And then within that, sort of the secondary question, is there a minimum lot size? That is the definition of lot? Doesn't have to be one acre, one and a half, two acres? I'm just wondering kind of what the history is behind it. Thanks.
So, so every zoning district has a minimum lot size? Unfortunately, most of our lots in Manchester are non-conforming, which means the lot does not meet the requirement for the zoning district. So if you're requiring a double lot, that essentially means none of us are eligible to put in an accessory dwelling unit because we don't have lots that are twice as big as they should be. We don't even have lots that are big enough to meet the requirement, leave alone double.
So if the lots aren't big enough to meet, meet the requirement, that allows somebody to put a second dwelling unit on such a whole lot?
So they, so they have to meet all the setback and height requirements anyway. And most accessory dwellings are going to be put within the existing house structure, not, not as additions.
Great, thank you. Sandy Bodmer Turner? Nope, you're on mute.
Sandy Bodmer Turner, eighty-nine School Street. I have a clarifying question following on Shannon's, which is, given the number of non-conforming lot sizes, if I have a non-conforming lot and it's too small and I want to put an ADU unit on it, do I then have to conform to what the zoning code is now? Or does it have to just be what the lot size then is, even though that's non-conforming?
So you'd have to meet the setback requirements. Or if you couldn't, you need a variance from the ZBA. And the ZBA would be granting the special permit. And if you're in a non-conforming house, because not the lot size, but because you're within the setback and your existing house is in the setback, then any addition you put on the house has to be on the part of the lot that is, that would be conforming.
I think it, it, it's a little bit depends and there's, that's why we have the special permit process because each situation is a little different.
I guess I have a clarifying question. I thought the board agreed that the lot had to meet the minimum size.
Oh, I think that's right. That is right.
But I don't see that language in what was presented.
We should check that. So I think the intent was that we would, that we would, that it had to meet the lot size of the district.
Well, that was behind your jumpstart contract, so it's okay.
But then it's not good, but then it would not be often used, right?
Exactly.
So my argument is if you don't have enough size for one house, you're going to allow someone to build two on a non-conforming lot. So I, I, I guess there's gonna be a difference of opinion on this. Uh, but that was my understanding what the board agreed to for this language and I don't see it here, so that's concerning.
Okay. No, uh. Sue Durkin, online. Sue, you might be muted. Okay, I'm gonna move to George Davis or Lisa Bonneville.
Okay, this is, this time it is George Davis.
Confusing.
There are only three changes that are being proposed, as I've heard it. And that leads me to the question of, how is this not tantamount to allowing every single-family house to turn into a two-family house?
So the definition of accessory dwelling unit is not a second unit, so it's an accessory unit. And that means it's within the existing, it's not a separate address. It's an in-law apartment, that's often what they're referred to as. Typically, they're occupied by seniors or by your children, grown children, although they don't have to be. Generally, they're small. They're not.
Can I read the definition?
Sure.
Let me, the accessory dwelling unit is an owner, I believe it's occupied in a single, single-family dwelling. Either the accessory dwelling unit or the main dwelling unit shall be owner occupied of the property, except for temporary absences of up to one year. The dwelling unit shall not be detrimental to the neighborhood. The accessory unit is accessory to the principal residence. And the floor area of the accessory dwelling unit will not exceed thirty-five percent of the floor area of the principal dwelling and the accessory dwelling unit combined. No exterior changes will alter the single-family character of the dwelling. Any additional, additions shall not increase the floor area or volume by more than ten percent. An adequate provision shall be made for the disposal of sewage and waste. And there's no other accessory dwelling unit already in the dwelling. Those are the current requirements that we are not changing.
Okay, so and there's stay in, so that's good. So that, that does rule out people, anybody having a perception that this is permitting a single-family house to just be turned into a two-family. Thank you.
Great. I'm gonna go back to Greg because he often has some helpful clarifications.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Sarah. I just wanted to comment though that if it, if it's only gonna be allowed for conforming lots, I, I don't think we're making much of a dent here. If, if you want to distinguish between non-conforming lots and, and conforming lots, perhaps the, the, for non-conforming lots, you consider it ha, the ADU must be within the existing structure's footprint. But for conforming lots, you might allow that up to ten percent expansion or something like that. I just think, I just think if you're going to limit it to conforming lots, which I think we only have like twenty-five percent of our lots being conforming.
Right.
This is really not accomplishing what I think the intent was, which is to provide some diversity in our housing stock.
Okay, great.
Elizabeth Elevates, two Mascanomo Street. I think that when we hear additional housing, it's sort of like you were plunking a house down in your yard or something like that. That, that, that's just simply not the, I wish there was a different phrase for it. Reconfiguring your house or something like that to include now apartment within your house that's of a certain size. Wouldn't that be sort of more the picture of things? I'm just trying to get the picture so that we don't, a non-complying lot is not going to then, you know, have another little tiny house or something like that on its lot. It's not the thing.
Not with this provision.
But isn't it true that you could, in an existing non-complying, in other words grandfather from the zoning as it currently stands, you could still propose to do some interior restructuring of your house? You have this unit. Isn't that correct?
You can increase it by ten percent, your floor area.
But not even increasing. Let's say you take two bedrooms and a bathroom and you make it into a little apartment within your house that wasn't there before as a unit. But it hasn't increased anything. From the outside of the house, you wouldn't see a thing change. Is that right?
That's right.
I'm just trying to get the picture.
And you need a special permit to do that.
I had, I do understand that, but the picture is someone walking by on the street isn't going to see a single bit of change from the outside of the house.
Right.
Right? I mean, are you even pushing the wall of the house out or something like that?
You don't have to, you certainly don't have to.
Yeah, I mean, so this additional unit, you know, what comes to my mind, and I think it was a little confusing for others, is the idea that, that we're adding some more stuff to that lot. And that's not exactly true.
Subject to special permit. Okay, John Round.
Yes, John Round, Greenbrier Road. So I, I heard the, the restriction that you really only want to deal with lots that meet the minimum for that particular zone. But if it's non-conforming in other aspects, in other words, there's some setback problem or something, that shouldn't be an issue. It's really just the size. And I don't know what percentage of the lots are non-conforming because they're too small for what the minimum is. But if, if it's, if it's got the correct size and there's some other issue that can be worked around with regard to the ADU, then.
Well, let's say you have a house downtown, this is a very interesting point, and the house is right up against another house, which is-
I know, I know lots that are four thousand square feet downtown and six thousand is the limit.
Actually, ADUs are only in this current bylaw, are only, are not allowed in the general district or in District D. So it's really in the larger districts.
No, I'm just using it as an example. If you had a house sitting in a setback and you weren't increasing the size of it all, of the footprint of the building, just putting a, an apartment in for your mother-in-law, that, shouldn't that be allowed?
Well, but, but even if you're increasing the footprint, is what, ten percent, I guess, is the, is the minimum. But it's not affecting the setback and maybe the setback issue is the problem with the existing structure, but not what you planned to do.
That's right.
You'd be all right.
Yes.
So let's, we're gonna have to resolve that. So thank you for the, I guess it's a support of a, uh, changes without expanding the footprint if you are non-conforming. Is that a correct assessment?
If you're non-conforming other than from a, a, a lot size.
Yeah, that would, okay.
That's okay.
I'm gonna try to take some people who have, we haven't heard from yet. Yes?
Brian Miller on School Street. On, with respect to the age limit of the house being two years, is that two years as the building permit or the occupancy permit has already been issued? Or two minutes, two years from the start of construction of the house?
I think we proposed it as from when, receive an occupancy permit.
Okay, so, but I, I didn't see that in the.
It should be in there. We'll confirm that we had that in there. Yeah, that was certainly the intent when the last time I go around. Yes?
David Lomston, eighteen Woodford Road.
Occupancy permits in there. What? Occupancy permits. Yeah, she said occupancy permit is in there. Thank you. David Lomston, thank you.
Lomston, yeah. So what's to distinguish my inviting my house for a separate apartment from my mother-in-law or my third cousin from Virginia or my daughter's best friend from Durham, North Carolina? Somebody I met on a cruise ship for a long period of time. In other words, could this be an Airbnb, quite a different name or no name at all? And if it is, then it's kind of our resort community. Could have a big effect that we may not anticipate or want.
So the proposed change, the existing bylaw is silent about who can occupy an accessory dwelling unit. And our proposed bylaw does not make any change. We haven't heard from you.
Uh, yes, Henry Lappam, twenty-five C Street. And I've heard reference to the master plan on this board and from other people. And I'd just like to point out that on page four of the master plan, it talks about preserves the character of the neighborhood. And on page six, five, it talks about preserve the unique character. And on page seven, I mean, on six, it talks about preserve the small-town character. And on page seven, it talks about preserving and protecting the community character. And I'm not gonna go through all seventy-one pages of the master plan. But I think when we're talking about neighborhoods, we're talking about preserving the neighborhood character. And I think this board should really single in on that as they talk about this or decide on issues. And one of the issues that you've already talked about is for senior housing. And they, and it says, uh, neighborhood character. Now I would hope you'd put in preserving neighborhood character. Because I think that's very important to the residents of the town. And the residents of the town generate over ninety-five percent of the revenue, as you well know. And in other words, I think the residents, the opinions and their, and their feelings are in the master plan. And I'd like to see the board spend some, make, preserving the character a major point in their decisions.
Okay, thank you for that comment. Let's see, we had Sue Durkin still has her hand up. Sue, do you, can you unmute?
Brenda hasn't, no, she hasn't.
Sue hasn't spoken yet either yet.
Yes, it's Tom Durkin at twenty Harbor Street. And I just, two points. I'd like to urge you to consider extending the period from two years to something much longer. I think two years is very short. And if this is something to add, um, and, and another drawing to something that's existing and people have lived in for a while, it strikes me that two years is a very short period. And pointing back to what was done in the eighties and what was going on in the town then versus development work and growth now, I think are very different times. And to the point that was just made, preserving neighborhood character is very important. So I'm, I'm concerned that the two-year period is very short.
Thank you. Okay, Brenda, we haven't heard from you.
Are you thinking Brenda Furlong?
I just see a name of Brenda. I don't, I can't discern. If you want to turn their cameras on when they speak, that would be great, but.
Uh, I'd love to do that. Let's see.
That makes it easier for me to know who is speaking, but. Go ahead, just.
Okay, it's Chuck Furlong, nineteen Ocean Street. And two observations. The town administrator referenced that the primary use of these was for in-law apartments. And I, I think I'd love to see some data produced that evidences that. And to the scope and scale of these ADUs, there are two which have gone in Ocean Street within the past, oh, one, almost the size equal to the primary dwelling. And the other, by my estimate, are having a house over one thousand square feet. So I'd like to disabuse you of the notion that the idea of adding a bedroom and having, what I have experienced.
Okay. Thank you. So the comment, I think, was that, 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 that these are large. I haven't looked at both of the Ocean Street building permits in question, but I know that I looked at one of the two. And it was not an ADU submission. I'm pretty sure neither of them were. So it is, it was applied for a special permit under a different provision of the zoning bylaw, the employee housing. And the special permit was granted under the employee houses, which is in section four, for employee housing. I, I don't know whether, who's living there. I don't know, I don't know anything about what was, and then the, so if you look at the building permit for at least one of the Ocean Street houses, it's not an ADU. So I can't speak to the other one because I didn't look it up. So just, so we are talking about, there is, so to clarify that, in section four, there is a provision that's been in, in the zoning for many years that you can apply for a special permit for employee housing in a carriage house or garage. And that is the more common way that people are applying for these accessory uses. And I believe, at least in the records I looked at, there were under ten of those in that time period. I don't have it right in front of me right now, so. Anybody we haven't heard from for the first time? Okay, I'm just gonna take a couple more comments on ADUs. Mr. Gates?
Slightly off-topic, but in order to better understand what you are doing, when are we going to be able to see on the town website the corrected November special town meeting zoning bylaw? And beside it or interleaving, interlining it, the proposed changes that we are discussing? And beside it or interlining it, the proposed changes that we are discussing now to be on the town warrant? So that we have a better picture in one place, legibly, to see what's going on.
So that's a good point. I think once the board finalizes our motions for the warrant, they will be posted on the town website and available at the town clerks and at the library.
I think there is no fall town meeting document.
That's, and then to the second question is the attorney general just returned their decision within the last week or two, couple of weeks, and so we need to make the change.
Actually, the town clerk forwarded me today the integrated zoning bylaw with what was adopted at last fall's town meeting. So our system is she does the initial integration and then I will review it. So it's not gonna be on the town's website for probably another two or three weeks.
So I think in the interim, there's no reason why we can't post the packet that was delivered to people at town meeting.
It has been up there.
It isn't up there.
Well, it was up there until we just took it down to have, anyway. We can, I think we can, we'll be getting the zoning changes, so that's not, let's keep moving on our, on our input. I see Sarah Pierce, do you have a comment on the accessory dwelling units?
Ah, yes, Sarah Pierce, 9 Friend Street. I just had a couple of questions actually, and I don't know if I should direct this to you. But as a planning board member, can you tell me what your vision or depiction with the bylaws, the way they are now, and the proposed bylaws, what do you see when you look at Manchester as preserving the character of the town? I mean, you are the planning board and you're doing the planning. From your own personal planning board perspective, what does that mean to you?
I think we're not, we really need to get through our, I think it's an important question. I'm not, I don't want to dismiss it. It was certainly, I was on the master plan committee and I was part of the, and this board voted for, to approve the master plan, but let's, I think that's a longer conversation than we have tonight. We're trying to limit this conversation to input on the planning board, so if you...
Okay, well, I do have another, another piece of that is as a resident, it's very difficult for people to navigate, you know, this information. You can get, you can subscribe and get the weekly tide, you can look into it. This isn't information that's readily available to the public. If you were to take a survey or walk through town, most people wouldn't know about any of the zoning changes that are coming up. And I think it is important for a town and for the residents to understand what the planning board's mission is on preservation and keeping the character of this town. Because once you change it, you cannot put it back. And that's not clear. Neither are the descriptions of these ADUs or who's gonna live there and who's gonna police them. And if you have a 6,000-square-foot house and you can make it 30% bigger or a 2,000-square-foot house, it's very confusing.
I'm gonna stop you there, so we really want to keep going and I appreciate your input, your request for additional information. We could talk a little bit about that.
How do I get that?
The master plan is one document. Okay, are there any additional new comments on this particular topic?
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. New comments, Mr. Keefe?
John Capey, Victoria Road. I don't want to just repeat, but it is impossible to follow the P here. I downloaded the zoning bylaws, I ticked and typed, but I'm just saying, no, but it's important that you hear clearly. But the other thing I was going to, I said, you know, again, I cannot tick and tie these language to the zoning bylaw. I can't find the tables in the zoning bylaw. I downloaded it again tonight. They're not in the zoning bylaw to which to be referred, so you're, and we're less than about a month away from a hearing. The citizens would have to have filed their petitions weeks ago. But professionals are still kind of stumbling through what we're gonna do. So I think that's an inappropriate and unfair ask of the town to follow the P with something that is so, kind of out of control. More, but my point on the ADU is, I would agree, I think it's a five-year look back. So someone doesn't build a house with the intention of converting it to a two-family out of the blocks. And five years, I think you have enough time to mitigate that. And the last thing is back to the enforcement. I don't know how we enforce the residential requirement of this, of the two-family for someone who lives there, but for the year. There's no, there's no way that can be enforced without some sort of policies in place to make that, some sort of teeth in there. Otherwise, it's a two-family house for eternity with no resident.
Okay, thank you. Sandy, on return.
Hi, I just wanted to add a comment about the lot size. And I very much support what Greg had to say. I was very glad to see you were still including the ADU in your proposal for town meeting because I think people are being driven out of town who have lived here for many years because the housing has become unaffordable for their children, for them in their older age. And so I'm very glad to see the ADU proposal there. Thank you for including it. And I certainly would like to see, since lot sizes, keeping the character of the town is diverse lot sizes, a variety of kinds of buildings and structures. And I would like to see that lot size requirement be whatever the lot size is of the property at the time.
Okay, thank you. Are there any new comments? So I want to make sure we get to, you have your hand up first.
Somebody's mentioned the A B and B or AB at breakfast. If these ADUs continually, you know, we always think the in-laws or the kids or, you know, grandma. What suppose somebody, you know, with no malicious intent decides, well, I'm gonna put an ADU in and I'll have weekly rentals, short-term rentals. At what point would something like that become a commercial venture rather than a residential venture?
Would you like to propose that there be a six-month minimum lease on an ADU?
I'd like to see something. I'm not sure if it'd be six months or...
I'm just trying to make this into a...
Perhaps maybe limited to, you know, blood relatives or something like that.
I don't think that's a bad strategy.
Right, but I wouldn't want to see just a commercial venture in a...
Okay, thank you. Yes?
Jonathan Ferze, Blossom Lane, and just a question. With the ADUs, would there be any requirement with, when you register for the special permit to build an ADU or have an ADU about affordable housing units? Because the more that we build, the more that adds into what we might need to do for affordable housing. So I'm just curious as to if we've, if we put this in our bylaw, we make these changes, that we, how are we gonna manage that?
It's the same problem.
Yeah, unfortunately, we can't require them to be affordable, or even a percentage of them.
Not the ADU, I'm saying, but the more housing we build and the affordable housing, we have to...
The answer to that question is actually much bigger than just this conversation.
Sure.
We are hundreds of units short. It's not gonna be zoning changes that allow us to get to that, as they try. It's gonna be commitment from a lot of people and a lot of financing, lots of effort. Affordable Housing Trust is trying to work with the Housing Authority to do this. There may be other opportunities that come up in town, but it's not something we're gonna address with zoning bylaws.
Okay, I'm gonna move us along, I'm sorry, to the next topic, which is adult entertainment. One quick question.
Have you done an inventory? I know that there's a committee on ADUs several years ago off this group. And I'm wondering if at any time in the last several years, you've done an inventory of unofficial ADUs in this town?
No, we have not, it's impossible.
So, okay, let's move on to adult entertainment regulations.
I have a question.
Do you have a one, Mr. Jay, do you have a comment about the ADUs? I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I have a question. I had heard earlier that it would be approximately three weeks before any information would be on the website. By definition, you have a town meeting coming up in about five weeks. You're giving the people of the town less than two weeks to absorb what it is that you're going to recommend. Any possibility you could be more timely?
We've heard that request loud and clear tonight and we'll do the best we can, as, so...
So you don't have an answer, all right.
I'm not gonna commit to a specific answer right now. Okay, I'm gonna move to adult entertainment comments. We've heard from, I think everybody's been heard at least once. So are there comments on the adult entertainment regulations? And let me remind you, we cannot change, with this public notice, we cannot change the location of allowed adult entertainment establishments. That is allowed in Section 4 in the LCD only, the limited commercial district. Any comments on the adult, proposed adult entertainment regulations? Yes, Caterina Gates.
Caterina Gates, school and desk, whatever, corner. Do we have a problem, do we have an issue with people coming to create things like this in this town and we have to plan that?
So the question is, do we have a problem? The regulations are... The regulations are proposed because we currently have none. And to avoid having a problem, we need to, it's in our best interest to regulate it, to prevent problems. Because currently, we have no regulations and therefore the ADU can establish, could be established without regulation. Okay, any other comments? Yes?
Just about the not allowing it next to a church or in church area would not be allowed because the Supreme Judicial Court struck that. There was a Brendel's Den versus the City of Cambridge. They said they couldn't serve liquor within 100 feet of a church. It was a church next to it, anyway. So you'd have to remove the, any religious mention to that.
All right, well, we had town council review this, so...
Well, town council reviewed it and basically the language that's included right now specifies that adult entertainment establishments should be permitted in Manchester, but it can't be within 1,000 feet of a property line of a church, a school, a parochial school, another adult use or 400 feet from a residence or a childcare facility. And that legal council reviewed it and approved it.
Well, I've just mentioned Brendel's Den versus Cambridge to him or her and see if he can look it up.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other comments on adult entertainment regulations? All right, let's move on. Yes?
Could it be possible to include community areas?
Like playgrounds and that kind of thing?
Like the community center or parks?
Well, it's in the LCD.
Yeah, it's already just gonna be in the LCD on the other side. So at this point, there's not a whole lot over there.
True.
Yet.
Done.
Okay, let's move to senior housing comments. I suspect we have some comments on that. Comments on the proposed senior housing regulations. And I'd like to try to take them as comments and not have a lot of questions unless they're clarifying questions, but go ahead, sorry.
Jonathan Ferze, Blossom Lane, so the proposed bylaw does not distinguish between commercial and residential uses. Both uses would be allowed in all districts of what Chris was mentioning. Does it, this is, this changes the zoning in the LCD to allow housing and changes zoning in the residential districts to allow commercial. My question is, is there a reason why we couldn't potentially split the bylaw to two separate bylaws to address the different nature of residential and commercial? Just curious.
Well, I think, I guess I would say that is your comment, you should split it because we have, we have hashed that around here.
Yeah, I guess my comment would be that, only because I'm a nurse practitioner by trade. I've worked in a lot of different facilities. I don't know if necessarily in my residential area, if there was a senior citizen's home that required a lot of like big vehicles coming in and food truck, like a lot of things that assisted living facility would provide. And if, if we are not limiting a bigger, like senior housing, that's perfectly fine. But if it's a bigger facility that's allowing a lot of different transportation and ambulances and things like that, I'm not quite sure that's proper in a residential area because it would impact, and I know and I saw those rules and all that kind of stuff. But if you're not separating, like it's almost like a business because it kind of is, I think it's very different of where that needs to be more in a commercial district than necessarily in a residential district. Both willing to have this in our community, we so desperately need them, but I think that it needs to be separated.
So I guess, can I paraphrase your comment?
Please do.
That a, that residential areas, the scale of these facilities should be small in residential areas?
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, Sandy, on one.
Hi, Sandy Rogers, 82, Old Essex Road. I agree with the comment that what you're doing is basically changing the zoning to be commercial in every district and that that's inappropriate. There's, there's a difference between like a senior housing development where it's like completely independent living and, you know, it's just over 55 houses, which is very different, you know, as a residential property versus a commercial. Second, it is very difficult to follow what was presented here because it's really high-level summary. But I did note that there was something where you could change the dimensions of the zone by special permit, which would mean, say, the zoning says that you have a height limitation of 35 and by special permit, now you're allowing those dimensions to change. You might be allowing the setbacks to change, and I think that's inappropriate.
Okay, thank you. We did actually strike the original provision that the special permit could increase the height restrictions. We did take that out in this, in this latest version.
Yeah, what Chris, Chris, what Chris presented was that there would be by special permit changes allowed in the dimensions of the zone. And you have to be very explicit in every single zone regarding what you're talking about or eliminate it completely. So I think that that's a real problem, so thank you.
I think that we said that you have to meet the minimums of the district and they could be, that the setbacks could be increased, not decreased. So it would be more stringent rather than less stringent than the, than the requirements in the district. Okay, Steve Kay?
Hi, Steve Kelly, 355 Summer Street. I would like to echo Ms. Creighton's comments about adult entertainment, that if you don't have restrictions, anything could happen.
Thank you.
And I don't understand why the planning board is taking such an aggressive approach to applying this to every district. I would advocate an evidence-based approach where you start small and see what happens and learn from what happens in Manchester specifically. Although it is good to see that other towns have this and yet I haven't seen anything about, you know, how is this applied in other towns?
Are you talking about, can I just get a correct, a clarification here? Are you talking about senior housing now?
Yes, I'm talking about senior housing applied to every district in the town, regardless of the type of senior housing that might be implemented in the district.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on the senior housing proposal? Yes, Mrs. Bates?
Isabel Bates, 2 Masconomo. Again, I want to give a heads up to our planning board in saying they are going to review proposals and if it is inappropriate in a community, they're going to say so. And that we're not going to have some great vast Brooksby Village shoved down our throat. Because the planning board, we can trust them to say, no, that's not appropriate here. The scale for this particular neighborhood must be very small or whatever. In other words, I hear fear in people's concerns about this. And yes, change of any sort is, it can create fear. But on the other hand, I trust the planning board, they are going to require every single one to be... They are going to require every single one to be by special permit. And that means a very critical review. So.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The other piece of the special permit that was not on the slides actually was public input is part of a special permit process. That I should have made sure that was on the slides, and thank you, Mrs. Bates. Anybody else? Sandy, did you speak? You have your hand up still, did you have something new to add?
Yeah, I actually forgot this one, I had a question.
This is Sandy, Gail, it's Sandy Rogers again.
Yeah, sorry, I forgot, I had a question. At the end of the list, I saw something that said over 18. And I was a little confused at what the meaning of that was. There are a lot of like senior housing that actually mandates that people be over a certain age. But it was odd that I saw something that was over 18. So can someone clarify that?
Yeah, Mary, you want to take that?
That line says that there has to be a principal resident that is 55 plus, and then all other residents are 18 plus, so that these units would not impact our schools. That's why that was there.
So for example, you might have a child who's in, you know, or a young person who was living with a grandparent.
Oh, so it's the, an additional person?
Mm-hmm. All residents should be over 18.
May I also say something to that?
Okay, hold on.
May I ask a question?
No, just wait a minute. Okay, let me look and see. Did that answer your question, Sandy?
Yeah, I think that needs to be clarified, so that would be good to hash out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just want to see if anybody else has not spoken yet. Okay, Mrs. Gates, go ahead.
I have this issue, we already know people who were at the senior housing, that they were 18 when they went there, but they are adults at that point. They can leave by themselves, and they were able to function.
Right, I think the restrictions for some of the planes or Newport Park is a different criteria than what we're talking about.
For the public housing, it's seniors 55 and older or handicapped.
Or if they're handicapped.
Handicapped, right.
They were handicapped.
We're not addressing that one.
Okay. Are there any other comments on the senior housing? Yes?
Just in general.
Introduce yourself again.
Oh, Kevin Leach, Summer Street.
Thank you.
In general, and I, this may not be accurate, I've heard rumors that our sewer system is currently inadequate. And all of these changes that we're making is adding additional residents. Is this the right time to be making, bringing in new residents when we don't have an adequate sewer system for what exists?
Right, can you clarify that rumor? Because I think that is not, that's not accurate. So let's. Right?
Sure, if you'd like me to. So our sewer plant is permitted to process 670,000 gallons a day. And our average daily volume is typically below 500. So we have a fair amount of capacity in, at the treatment plant. So a typical home, each bedroom is flow rated at 110 gallons. So a typical home with, you know, three bedrooms is going to be, you know, 330 gallons a day. So with over, you know, close to 200,000, over 200,000 gallons of capacity, you've got quite a bit of, quite a bit of new homes that could be connected if you wanted it to.
Right, thank you. Right, we're also worried that you have, you're having an earthquake at your house or something.
Sorry, I'm holding it with my hand, I shouldn't do that.
Please feel free to make it if necessary. Okay, I'm seeing no additional, any other additional public comments about senior housing? From anybody who hasn't spoken yet? Okay, Sandy, do you have anything new to add?
I just wanted to add to that last comment. I think it would be good to get from the planning board and from the town the impact on our infrastructure, given current proposals that might come down the pipeline. I think that, you know, we have a lot of things going on. We have lab facilities, we have the potential for 40B because that's on the plate. I think it would be good for the town to understand what kind of caps we might want to put on some of these and write those into these bylaws. So there might be a more strict cap.
Yeah, I'm gonna stop you there because that's outside of the, Sandy, it's outside of the scope.
A strict cap to this senior housing, a strict cap to the ADUs to limit and, like I've heard from other people, like walk before we run, before we let things go. And I don't know what kind of caps you're adding to these particular bylaws.
Okay, so those bylaws, thank you. Sarah Pierce, you have a comment on the senior housing?
I do, yes. I just wanted to ask about Greg's input on the sewer capacity. Is that including the cell signaling building that's slated to go in?
So the cell signaling is anticipated to be in the 20,000 range, 20,000 gallons a day. So that's the flow rating. Typically, we see the state mandated flow rating at about, what's it? It's typically a 40% overage. So when we have a couple of years of use, you typically see less actual usage than what was flow rated by the state calculations. But in any case, when we did the comprehensive waste management plan for the town, the LCD was allocated in the range of 65 to 90,000 gallons a day of future use.
And where we got right now?
Well, we haven't allocated any to the LCD.
But what do we get currently in the town of what we're using?
So like I said, currently, the treatment plant can handle, is permitted for 670,000 gallons a day.
Okay.
Our average annual daily is in the high 400,000 gallons a day.
Great, thank you. We're gonna stick to, any other comments on, thank you, Greg. Any other comments on the senior housing?
Well, I did have another question about the drinking water quality. And I just, I.
Yeah, it's, we're not, we're not, we're not talking about that tonight. So any comments specifically about senior housing?
Well, can I just ask, can you talk? It seems like on this, on this, on the, all these calls, you just say you're not talking about that, you're not answering that, it's a long conversation, you don't want to talk about it. But these are important issues. And like, many people have brought up, we have a town hall meeting coming up, and we don't have answers to these questions.
Thank you for that comment. We, there, we're gonna, now, the public hearing was posted for the purposes of those four bylaw changes. Are there any other comments specifically about the bylaws that have come to mind?
I can't emphasize enough how important it is for the planning board to present these clearly and with comprehensive understanding so that the people, unfortunately, who haven't studied in advance can understand what they're being asked to vote on. I think it was very confusing last fall, and I really hope that the clarity will be there so that this is not a complicated process.
Thank you. Okay, any other new comments? Hearing none, I'm gonna turn back to the chair.
All right, at this time, I'd like to hear a motion to close the public hearing.
Um, I'll second.
I'll roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay, that ends the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. And so, to the board, we've heard a lot of comments tonight. I think maybe Susan can highlight some of them, and then we can talk about maybe incorporation of some of these. Some of them are excellent comments.
Why don't we take adult entertainment first?
Solid adult entertainment.
I will, we accept the motion as presented in the February 10th adult entertainment zoning bylaw document as our motion for town meeting.
I'll second.
All right, discussion?
So, Betsy, could you explain on page two? Page three, 8.6.4. It says, "For those retail uses permitted by right in the general and limited commercial districts which sell sexually explicit goods and paraphernalia, but do not meet the 25% thresholds outlined in section two, such goods and paraphernalia shall be located blah, blah, blah." So I don't know what section two is.
Section two is the definitions.
There's thresholds in section two? Section two.
So 8.6.2 is definitions?
Oh, 8.6.2, let's set that.
Yeah, it has to say 8.6.2. So there is thresholds defined in the mass general law?
Yeah. And so what that does is, say, for example, there's a business downtown that sells,
Re-mail.
sells, you know, magazines, gadgets, whatever, that are sexually oriented. It basically puts a cap on an existing business so that the information is kind of kept out of reach of anybody who's under 18 years of age.
And are those currently allowed by right?
I believe that there's certain magazines that are probably on the news shelves that are, one could argue are sexually explicit. And the whole idea is to put a cap on them so they don't kind of overexpand.
So can we actually clarify that we do and maybe just prevent it? I don't even think, I mean, I actually took a look around town, I did not see any. So I feel like we're opening this up to something that we don't have.
Okay. Well, what we're doing is, just because we don't have it today, what we're saying is if Richdales or Seabreeze decides to sell explicit magazines, they must keep them behind the counter.
Well, why would we just not say that you can sell them?
I don't know, I'm not sure we can, can we regulate them? Can say you can't sell Playboy or whatever it is at the Richdales?
Why not?
Freedom of speech.
This is why we're putting it on the other side.
No, 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 but it's the quantity. It's the issue.
I think we're opening ourselves up to something that doesn't exist. I mean, we're opening this language. I'm not sure that.
I think we're actually restricting.
Yeah.
Something that is not currently restricted. So right now, what I'm led to believe is that if Seabreeze wants to sell an explicit magazine because it's a minor part of their business, they can put it on the, by the cash register. And this is saying they can't put it by the cash register, it needs to be behind the counter.
Yeah.
So it's not like we're inviting it, we're saying if they are doing what they are allowed to do now, then they can, then they have to keep it out of reach of.
Yes.
Sarah?
So there's one more question. 8.6.8, the third sentence, it doesn't make any sense to me. It's saying, "Building or use which violates any town of Manchester by the sea by law of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts." Is it just a comma error? I'm not really understanding what that means.
This, it should probably be get, strike, Manchester by the sea, it's probably over the Commonwealth.
Should we just take out?
I think it should say "or the Commonwealth of Massachusetts."
Okay.
Does that make sense now?
Yes.
Okay.
So as, I am modifying mine to be as amended. Chris seconded that.
I'll second.
The amendments, that we just did the definition section, 8.6.2, and the "or" instead of "of."
You got those?
Yep, we got those.
On the motions, on the amended motion, any further discussion? I'll take a roll call vote, Ms. DeWesley.
I'm gonna abstain.
Silver?
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes. What do you want to take up next?
Start top administration.
Any ideas?
Hello, you, please.
And the ABUs?
Sure, ABUs.
So I think we heard a couple of comments that I like from the public. One was we need to increase the parking.
Not change.
We have an additional space for the ABUs. And then this comment about, well, that's one. And then my other comment was on some kind of lease requirement for these.
There was also a few comments about possibly changing the two years to a longer time period.
And also the, the modifying the lot requirements to being, to clarifying that, that the lot be, that it's having some sort of a lot requirement, whether it was as in the district or some other, so maybe.
I don't know what happened to that, I'm pretty sure that we voted on that. It needed to be the minimum of the lot of the district size.
Yes, we did vote on that.
I think I agree that we did vote on that, so let's, we can have a discussion.
So I'm just throwing these out as any discussion points to change anything, and.
Maybe we should take them one at a time. How about the parking? Why don't we start with parking, it's easy to understand.
All right, so it was mentioned that parking may be an issue with limiting it to one spot. Any discussion on changing that? Ms. Foley?
Hi, we did get a few comments on that, and I think we are having increasing issues with off-street parking. And I think it makes sense to, if we're adding another dwelling unit, that we have the two parking spaces.
So just so we know, what the current bylaw says, off-street parking for at least four vehicles shall be provided in a manner consistent with the character of a single-family dwelling.
That's interesting.
So.
So it already is.
Yeah, I think it is already four. So what we would do is strike number three from the, from the motion. Is, I think, be the proposal.
So we currently allow two family houses with three parking spaces. There are going to be many more probable, I don't know how many two-family units there are. There are a lot. I don't know how many have three parking spaces. But it seems silly to, to require more parking spaces for an accessory dwelling than for a two-family house.
Is the problem the accessory dwelling unit or the problem with the reduced parking? Too little parking with the two-family?
So I'm going to say that the parking required for an accessory dwelling unit would be the same as for a two-family house. And then if we change to a family house down the road, we could then change accessory dwellings.
I would say for me, it highlights we probably don't have enough parking for two-family houses because we do see that in District D, more parking on the street. And I think instead of making two wrongs, we should.
No, she just said for two-family houses.
Correct, that.
So somebody said something about the number of cars per, you said something about that, told me about.
I think the average based on excise tax is two cars per household in Manchester, on average.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion that we amend this motion by striking number three, which, and number three is amending 9.2.1C by changing off-street parking of at least four vehicles to off-street parking for at least three vehicles, thereby leaving the bylaw as currently proposed.
You're a second?
Second.
And.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
Here's, my rationale is, I think we do. Here's, my rationale is, I think we do, ha, I, I agree with you, Chris, and I'm, um, but, I think we want to get the other changes, and I think this is an impediment. I think we've heard this from many people, and I, I'd like to, the other changes are more important, I think, and so I think that this is an impediment, and a special permit, um, process might, uh, there might be creative solutions, you know, oh, well, I'm gonna, uh, have a deeded use by my neighbors for that special, that, that fourth parking space or something, or the parking spaces are, are in tandem, or whatever, I think the special permit will appropriately evaluate it. So I, and I want to see the other changes passed, and I think we've heard that this is the, the thing people care most about, about this, um, by law. So, that's my rationale.
Any other board comments on the motion?
Uh, I think that's an error on your part to think that that's an impediment.
Maybe, hey, I'm an impediment.
And I'm gonna put on my, if, um, Laura were here, she would say we're also now increasing the impervious surface on the, on the lot, and that's bad for the environment. Maybe we could say something like four parking spaces unless, uh, the ZBA determines there only three are required, something like that.
The problem is you don't need impervious surfaces, you can have gravel, which doesn't indicate that.
Yeah, but most, most people are gonna make a paved parking space.
Well, not if you're already over in your impervious, and I think this is the concern in a lot of these places where it can happen. You don't have the adequate size for the lot, this is gonna spill over into the street, it's gonna congest neighborhoods even more. And we're talking about, you know, potentially, you know, increasing our density. I mean, you know, what, is it ten, fifteen years ago, November first, people couldn't park on the street? If that ever went retroactive, I don't know where people are parking during snow emergencies, like, we do have to be a little forward-thinking where people are going to park.
I think, I agree with Sarah, I think from what I've heard is that this parking thing may be an issue to the overall passage of the, what we're trying to do here. So I think we have a better chance of pushing getting this.
My concern with some of this too is, you know, I've brought this up before, a minimum amount of green space. So if you have a smaller lot, which we haven't gotten to yet, and you're gonna take up the rest of a smaller, undersized, non-conforming lot with parking, that clearly is not keeping the character of the neighborhood. So, there's a lot of things and a lot of secondary issues that we haven't thought through, it's just easy to say double the lot size, oh, well, that's, that's gonna make more housing, but it might, but it may, you know, not be with what the neighborhood is expecting, so, uh, in my opinion, we have not thought through some of these issues and where they belong, um, I am concerned about that, and then I'll get to the lot size next, I guess. So I agree with the parking, um, but I'm concerned that an entire empty space could be parking, and I don't think that's what we're looking for.
Well, that's what we current, my, the, we have an existing ADU by law that, um, has four spots, so I don't think.
And you have to have double a lot size, that's my concern, you double a lot size, so you win more land.
Fair enough.
So any further discussion on the motion of, uh, the parking? So the mo- motion is to strike the, uh, reduced parking from four to.
Just strike the, strike the change, leave it as is.
The reduction. Uh, I'll have a roll call vote, Ms. Foley?
Uh, yes to striking it.
No.
Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes.
Okay.
Next topic.
So why don't we take them in order, we, uh, we, or reverse order, we have two other issues in the, the mo- in the proposed regulations. The first is deleting, uh, the language, except in single residential District E, the lot size shall be two times the minimum lot size as determined by zoning. We were gonna strike that, and I think I agree with Christina and Mary that our intention was to have it be the lot size of the district. So I think what we're doing is talking about the lot size, modifications to the lot size.
So my recollection of that discussion was, we're talking about dimensional requirements, not lot size.
I mean, I don't recall that, I mean, I think the initial bylaw intent was to reduce the, double the size, and so my argument is, if you have a non-conforming lot because of size, you didn't have enough land to build a single-family residence, now you're going to add another. Some people say it's a two-family, some people say it's an ADU, and that will completely, you know, burden that property with parking now for four, um, when there wasn't enough for the single, so I do feel like that is an issue.
Can I say one thing, we now currently allow everyone in this town to take in four board in their house.
Yes, but we're talking about ADUs.
I understand, but.
That's a different, that's not on the agenda.
Terms of density and, and parking and.
And I think one of my concerns with the parking study that was undertook, taken, is that it didn't include the heater, it didn't include these areas that are burdened, and now we don't have that data, and now we're proposing things, um, and we should have studied, you know, up until, like Pleasant Street and Pine and some of these neighborhoods. We didn't do it, so we don't have the data to provide it, but I think some of these houses in these neighborhoods are gonna be burdened with parking.
So, can I just bring us back to what's our specific recommendation for the issue of lot size? Is your, I, I, I'm gathering that yours is no change, so.
Um, at a minimum, it has to meet the minimum lot size of the district.
Yeah, I would say, so my recollection is we did vote that, um, that the lot would, um, have to be conforming to add another dwelling unit onto the property, um, because if it's, if it's, um, non-conforming because of a setback or something like that, somebody's new access door could be right at somebody's, you know.
But there's a special permit.
Um, I'm just describing, um, so I think we heard many comments, I'm just looking at my notes, um, questioning the double the lot size, removing that, and the conforming size, so my recommendation would be to at least keep this in the ADU bylaw as is now, um, because we haven't really hashed out the nuances with non-conforming, how it impacts with parking, how it impacts the character, um, of the neighborhood, and this gentleman had pointed out about the master plan, um, really preserving that, and so preserving the character of the neighborhood, um, if we're going to shrink lot size requirement, um, potentially sh- well, we took the parking off, so that's good. I, I, I think we're potentially with one thing changing a lot of items that the master plan has spelled out and that residents spoke to tonight, so I would vote to, um, remove number one.
Can we just speak about the master plan for a second? The, the number one recommendation on the master plan is to increase the diversity of housing types in this town.
Yes, but as I.
Also preserving the town character, and the one way to do that, both those things, is with an accessory dwelling unit.
I agree, I, I, the, what came out of the master plan is, um, residents wanted a diversity of housing, which I think is a hundred percent accurate. Also very strongly, which I sent to the board, um, this past week, is that an overwhelming percentage did not want to increase the density of housing. So I think we have to be creative how we're gonna do these, um, proposals, and I don't think limiting lot size is getting us to that.
I'm gonna make a motion. Um, my motion is, um, to delete, to, to change number one, which reads, delete section nine point one point two A, except in single residential District A, to read, the lot shall meet the minimum lot size as determined by zoning regulations. And, um, that's my, in, in the district, yeah, the minimum lot size is determined by zoning dis- so to meet, and then, and I want to get us to there, and then I want to ha- I'm gonna make a second motion to further refine it after we decide if we.
It was in A?
I meant E.
To, it's just in.
E, I think it's E.
It's in A, no, A, it's A.
E?
It's E. It's E.
Right now the language says E.
E, E is a two-acre zoning.
Right.
Oh, in District E, yeah, sorry.
Yes.
But it's a.
Requires four acres of.
But the section is one, nine point, one point two point two A.
Require two acres is.
Requires two, right.
Sir, could you?
Except in single residential District A, the lot shall meet the minimum, maybe we strike except, they'll just say the lot shall meet the minimum lot size as determined by the zoning regulations. Just, that's, that's what it should say, because it's.
For that district.
Yeah, for the district, strike the, so the, so the new language is deleting, no, um, I should say amending, sorry, section nine point two, it should be nine point two point two A, to the lot shall meet the minimum lot size as determined by zoning regulations. I'm just trying to.
What about keeping it as is, and can we give the ZBA?
Let, I'm making a motion.
Well, she made a motion, is there a second on, uh, Chris, on, um, Sarah's motion?
Second.
Okay, and.
Okay.
My discussion is, um.
Any discussion?
So what I'm trying to do is get us incrementally to at least where I think some of us want to be, um, so if we get, i- if we don't ag- if we don't, you know, this is sort of a midpoint, and then I probably will make another motion, figure out what it's gonna be. So, I know you, I'm trying to.
So my idea was to keep the language as is, and then ha- somehow word it that the ZBA could reduce it to nothing smaller than the minimum lot size.
Well, is that what a special permit does?
No, what she's saying is opposed to having it being a requirement.
Yep.
No, I see.
Where are you getting nine point two from?
I didn't know. Nine point one point two point two.
Oh, nine, okay, I thought you changed it to nine point two.
Yeah, you said nine point two.
Yeah, I might, it's nine point one point two point two. There's two twos, two point two A. Yes, and it should read amend nine point one point two point two A. A lot size shall meet a minimum lot size as determined by, by the zoning regulations.
Any further discussion, otherwise?
So conforming or non-conforming as for the structure?
Correct.
Well, it could be a non-conforming structure.
Yeah, this is just lot size, we're not, this, this whole thing doesn't talk at all about the non-conforming of the structure. I don't think we can take that up based on a public hearing. But maybe we can, let's, let's, this is just this issue.
I think that was part of the initial conversation though, I mean, that was, it was, was it a conforming lot? And that's where we got into the discussion of, does it meet the district lot size?
But we are where we are, however we got here. And this was straight out of the, whatever, we are where we are.
So it sounds like we're gonna.
No, let's, let's vote this, we're not in agreement.
I don't know if we are, I mean, I just don't feel like what we discussed, then we reflect in here.
If we want to, we can drop it down further, what I'm trying to do is incrementally get, figure out where, where our agreement is, so.
I thought we had an agreement, so I don't know why we're doing it now.
Okay, but I think this is what we thought we had, some of us thought we had agreed, so. This is left, this is within the, the bounds of the public hearing, because it's less restrictive than it was advertised. So, uh, my motion is to amend, number one, amend nine point one point two point two A. The lot size shall meet the minimum, uh, I guess to read, the lot size shall meet the minimum lot size as determined by zoning regulations. For the district. We're done on it.
Any further discussions on that mo- what, well, that, is that?
That's my motion for that section.
Seconded.
Yes, Sue seconded.
So, okay, so any further discussion, otherwise we'll take a vote on it.
Take a vote on the amendment?
On this motion, on this, just this piece right there.
Just one piece for now, I guess there's gonna be more coming from our.
More coming on this, on number one?
Well, what I'm trying to do is, is get us incrementally, if we have agreement here, we may want to go, go further to talk about non-conforming lots, but I want to see where, if we have agreement at least on this reducing it from double to the district. And then, we can talk about the next level, see if we have votes for that.
I guess my, my only comment with this would be that we currently have doubled the lot size for a reason, and I, I, I don't see, I don't see with all the comments and, and preserving character and all of that, I don't see that this is, this is moving us in the wrong direction as far as I can see.
There's been no permits under that rule, I guess, nobody's built.
Nobody's done it.
So we're trying to empower.
Okay, we have to keep stop saying that, one was permitted this year on my street, like, we just need to stop saying this, it's just absolutely false, so.
Because we have no idea.
It's not false.
It is false.
Maybe if it happens since May, then, then you, then I don't have it, my data.
Let's just say very little.
Very little. So, my, my battery's dead.
But does that, I mean, do we know that that is because?
We don't know, I don't know.
Right, so we don't know, I mean, people just might not want them.
Well, in that case, we don't have to worry, do we?
Well, I, well, agreed, and I don't know why we're changing things if we're, if we're compromising to other things.
This was done on purpose, it was done to prevent the development of ADUs, that's how you do it, very clever.
No, I, I mean, I, I read it quite differently, I look at the bylaw saying, this is, to add another unit is adding, you know, another residence, right? And so you would want the added space to accommodate that for cars and people walking around or whatever, so I, I, I think that people considered that and said, well, if we're gonna do that, have two residences on one property, we should have double the lot size. I look at it as a positive.
It seems to me that this is one of those things where there's a difference of opinion, and we, um, you know, intent or results, and, and we have differences of opinion, we, let's vote it.
All right, any further discussion, I'll take a roll call vote on Sarah's motion, Ms. Foley?
To, to change it to that, uh, no.
Chris?
No.
Yes.
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 No.
Motion fails.
But for that, for the.
So I guess I'd like to note, right for the record, eleven Lincoln Avenue was deemed an accessory dwelling.
Yeah, incrementally that. Okay, so, um, do you want to make a motion? Or you want to just leave it as, you meant, your motion is the, what is, what's written there? Just strike the, the lot requirements?
Yes, I move that, um, language, be retained the way it is in the current document.
So I don't think we need to vote that, I think that's what's there, obviously we want to move it forward, I guess, that's true, okay.
I think we've decided we're gonna move it forward.
On Chris's motion to leave the language as is, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, I think the special permit will handle this, and I think there are a lot of non-conforming uses. I think it makes it harder to pass at a town meeting, but I think we should, um, give the town the opportunity to be heard in, in a large group rather, because I do think this is a matter of opinion, um, and so I think we have hatched this issue around the table for years. And we haven't given it to the broad voter public, and we've heard from people tonight, um, a number, uh, we, some spoke for it, some spoke against it, but, but the, the population size is twenty or something, who spent the time tonight, which we appreciate, um, them coming out. So I think it's time to put this before the voters and hear, give them an opportunity to weigh in, and then we'll better know what the town, as opposed to all of us kind of conjecture on this issue. So I think, um, I support leaving it as is, as, as written.
Any other discussion points?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
I'm sorry.
Wow.
Just, uh, co- there were comments about the timeframe that is in the document.
Yeah, I think we're just talking about number one right now.
Oh, just number one, I'm sorry, misunderstood, okay.
I think, yeah, we haven't gotten to the timeframe piece.
Discussion on the motion to leave it?
I was just gonna, to, um, go off of Sarah's comment that I, I do. I was just gonna, to, um, go off of Sarah's comment that I, I do ultimately think that, um, residents should decide this, obviously. But I think the planning board should be able to present more to them to decide, um, how many we currently have, what reducing the lot size, what the impact would be. I mean, something, some sort of analysis and, and we just haven't done it, so.
Okay. Um, any other comments from the board?
We're just talking about number one and then we'll get to number two, if you don't mind, parsing this out.
All right, I'll take a roll call vote, uh, Chris, on your motion.
Yes.
Ms. Creighton.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Filbert.
Yes.
Ms. Delisio.
No.
Ms. Foley.
No.
Chair votes yes.
Okay, great.
That's four, two.
Four, two. Okay, then the last piece is the amending by deleting the, the, so what we currently have written is, deleting the single family dwelling shall have existed on the lot as of March first nineteen eighty-four and replacing it with a single family dwelling shall have existed on the lot with an occupancy permit for more than two years, two years or more. So, the, does anybody need, wanna make a change to that? We heard some comments.
I'll make a motion. Um. Two, enough. Not gonna say it probably correctly, but, um, the gist of it is to change it to five years, um, somebody here had mentioned five years. Which I think would be beneficial, um, that, you know, a builder isn't building something or, or, or a, you know, people. And then just through that process, the two-year lapses and then they add an ADU, so I think five years would be a good amount. So I would make a motion to amend nine point one point two B, um.
And it should actually be two point, nine point one point two point two.
B.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, nine point one point two, point two B, um, to change the language instead of saying two or more years, to say five or more years.
I'll second that.
She's been made and seconded, any discussion?
Um, I would just, since I'm fairly new to the discussion, obviously you talked about the period of years for many meetings. Um, I'm just wondering, um, what would the difference be in terms of all of the factors you all considered in, in picking two or more years, I mean, what?
That's a very good question. Uh, I think Mary, you have a good point, which is the, the, the process of building a house and getting settled in it might be five years. Of course, it'd be three years from occupancy permits, so, uh, or two years from occupancy permit, which gives a pretty much, uh, a, a pretty good period of time.
I think she's saying five years from occupancy.
She, she is, but the, we originally said it was two years.
Yeah.
I wonder if a compromise would be the three years that was originally placed in the, um, in the bylaw. Because this bylaw passed in nineteen eighty-seven, had to be built before nineteen eighty-four.
So, in which bylaw was three years?
The current, well, when the current bylaw was passed, it was a three-year lease period.
Oh, I thought it was two, which is like.
No.
Um, no, I'm gonna stick with my five.
I, so I think we were trying to just have it reflect, um, the fact that a house needed to be there for a while. Um, I think five, the one thing about five is that it, um, potentially could be, the house would turn over. Um, and that would be the catalyst, um, as opposed to the sort of initial, I, I don't know, I, I don't, I don't feel strongly. I'm, um, I, I want to see this, the, I wanna see the, uh, by, the proposals pass. And so we heard that two seemed short, so that five is fine.
So my, I have a comment on this, and I think the original bylaw said it had to be in existence by March first of nineteen eighty-four. So that set a date, and this, by sending it two, three, five years, it, the date's rolling. So I think we need to get back to the, until the date, or, I don't, I mean, why, I don't remember a conversation of why.
Well, the point was that a date was sort of arbitrary and now that date is, and that was pa- that amendment was passed in nineteen eighty-seven, which is a long time ago. And so trying to just reflect what we thought was the intent, which is to have it in occupied houses, not brand-new construction. We don't know if that was the intent.
That's exactly right, so.
So, we don't, we don't know that for sure, but.
The point is we're making this now a rolling target versus a fixed date.
Yes.
That's the intent.
Cuz it seems to make a little more sense. So.
Any further discussion on Mary's motion than go to five years? I'll take a vote, Ms. Foley, on your motion?
Yes.
Ms. Sarah Olmeyer.
I guess I'll say yes.
Yes.
Chris. Ms. Filbert.
Yes.
Ms. Delisio.
Um, yes.
I would like a yes, or a we, but, chair votes yes, unanimously.
Okay, so, I'm gonna make a motion that we advan- that we finalize this, uh, accessory dwelling units regulation, do we need to do?
I would like to add another.
Oh, okay.
Another amendment to this.
Besides relitering the remaining sections?
Besides, yes, I'd like to add a, a provision, which is that the occupant of a accessory dwelling unit must have at least a six-month lease.
Add that in.
Can we?
I second that vote.
I, I totally second, thirded, but, um, can we, is that within the scope of the, of the hearing?
I was just gonna ask that, is there a reason, just?
There was a comment in the.
Was a comment in the public?
There was, no, why, so why couldn't we just make it a year?
Oh.
Well, good.
I mean, uh, to me, this is encouraging six-month and Airbnbs in the summer in this community, if I'm, so.
Oh, yeah, okay, we'll make it a year, that's fine, okay.
I'll amend that.
I'll amend, I'll amend my amendment.
So, uh, for a year, is there a second on that?
Yes.
Any discussion?
So let's get specific about how we're gonna do this.
Who enforces it?
The building inspector.
He'll say it's not in his purview.
It will be in his purview, it's a zoning requirement.
Then we might need to add some language right now.
Yeah, but the curb cuts were a zoning requirement and that he didn't inspect those.
Okay, we don't need the relettering cuz that's, um, we don't need that anymore cuz we took out, we didn't, we, we didn't delete anything. So can we add a? Amen section, can I?
Yeah, Mary. Mary.
Maybe it's part of the spooking permit process.
So can we amend section D, which currently reads, either the accessory dwelling unit or the main dwelling unit should be occupied by the owner of the property for the temporary, except for temporary absences of up to one year. And, uh.
Enforceable by the building.
No, wait, and. The other unit or something like that, and the second unit.
Accessory.
Second unit, well, cuz.
The, the owner might live in the.
Right, the owner might live in the, second unit must, uh.
Be occupied.
Shall be subject to a lease if, well, yes, so, shall be subject, thank you, subject, shall.
Do you lease this to your family?
Yep.
Sure.
Right, all right.
Do?
Sure.
Subject to a lease of at least one year, of at least twelve months.
That's right, you can do that.
So, um.
It'd be a very simple lease, but, yeah.
D, um, so the, the, the issue is going to amend section nine point one point two point two D by appending, saying, uh, at, at, at the end of that section, and.
And the second unit shall be subject to a lease of not less than twelve months.
Yep. Yes.
I'll, I'll take that amendment.
Good, thank you.
So you're, you're, I'm agreeing to the friendly amendment from Sarah.
I approve the amendment. Absolutely.
Okay, great.
And that's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Look, um, Mary, follow me.
I am in favor of that, I'm concerned we have no procedures in place, though, of enforcement, and so it's hard to, um, propose a bylaw change that we don't know how it would help, we don't have procedures for it.
I think we should add those as regulations, in part of our regulations.
Just like we can with driveways, yeah?
Can we say it's not in place, it's not, um, until the regulations are written?
Yeah, we don't have any regulations.
How about?
We're, we're working on it.
Yeah, the subcommittee, I know, but we don't have, we haven't voted anything in.
So let's vote them in, let's make them and vote them in.
For what town meeting?
Uh, no, after the town meeting, they can't do it before, it's not a, it's not a bylaw.
So we're on an agenda to vote in regulations subsequent to town meeting approval.
Mm-hmm, yes, that's good.
Can it be acceptable?
Mm-hmm.
To the board then?
Where does that language go?
Uh, don't know where we would fit that in.
I think we. I don't think we put it in the zoning, I think we.
So, so administration section has regulations pursuant to regulations, it's just like that language, just to stick a line in there.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, we could say pursuant to regulations, like.
Pursuant to regulations.
And put it at the beginning of it because we're gonna have the same problems enforcing on, uh, owner regulations.
Yes, so amend section D to say pursuant to planning board regulations.
So one of our first orders would be to do this after town meeting, provided this is approved.
Yeah.
So, let's, let's show the chair, we, remind the chair to.
Okay.
Perhaps just.
And add our pets to that.
And curb pets.
I mean, we do have a subcommittee.
Well, then that's another one.
Still in effect, perhaps we should just delegate these duties to that subcommittee.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so can I just clarify, this is a, uh, another line, number four, to, um, section D shall now read pursuant to planning board regulations, either the accessory dwelling unit or the main dwelling unit shall be owner, shall be occupied by the owner of the property except for temporary absences of up to one year. And the second unit shall be subject to a lease of not less than twelve months.
So my concern with the temporary absence of one year, are we opening ourselves up for that to be Airbnb'd up?
It's actually in the card.
That's all, sorry about that.
I don't, I'm not sure you wanna have pursuant to the planning board regulations, I mean, you want the building inspector to enforce it, isn't that right?
Well, that's what the regulations would say, I think.
Yeah, but it doesn't really do you any good in the regulations.
Cuz we already have a enforcement mechanism, whether it's effective or not is a separate discussion.
It seems to me that if enforcement's a problem, you sit down with the board selectmen and Greg and you resolve it.
It's a different discussion.
We have the same comment.
Because I can tell you legal counsel, when they're looking at this, saying, what regulations, you haven't adopted them.
Our administrative section has it. There's three lines of it.
Right, but, but you're putting in regulations for something that hasn't been adopted yet.
We do that all the time.
Yeah, administration's there, we don't have any regulations in the administrative section.
It's a chicken and egg, we can't, we can't.
Well, that's about to change.
Well, we have a committee to do this and that's what we were.
Who's on the committee?
Chris and Mary and myself.
Okay.
So.
I think, um, can I ask, can I, we don't have to final, finalize, can, can, why don't we leave it as pursuant to planning board regu- like I just read? And then get, we're gonna have council review this again one more time, I'm sure. And if they think it should be struck, can we authorize Betsy to strike that language? Can I add that as a?
Well, I mean, it kinda changes my decision.
Well, let's suggest. Let's suggest another way around to get enforcement.
I guess my point being, let's get the change we want, which is the lease, which is the important thing.
Yeah.
And, um, if it, if pursuant to planning board regulations is not the right language to put it in here, this, unfortunately, zoning is an iterative process, it appears, and, um, you know, we're, um, so, but. I would say that we check with council and if we, if it's not appropriate, then we strike it.
I'm not sure how they approve the administrative changes, if they have a concern with this line.
Or you could say as a condition of the special permit, you can't do X.
Oh, yeah, I could say that.
Can't do what?
Uh, you can't, as a condition of the special permit, the lease cannot.
Oh, right, that's a good idea. So, just instead of pursuant to planning board regulations, as a, as a condition, the special permit shall require that either the accessory dwelling unit, blah, blah, blah.
So the problem with that is now we're bound to that one line, if we had regulations, we can adopt them as a board from time to time.
We could still do that, can we not?
Not if we take this, not if we take this, that line out, is my point. If we see that there's some concerns and we wanna change the regulations with something, we can amend it, with this language, we can't. We don't need to go to town meeting.
Can we say as a condition of the special permit and pursuant to planning board regulations?
Sure, I like that food since suspenders.
But are we, or is that saying that somebody's gonna give a copy of the lease to the building inspector, so he's keeping track of one, two, three, neighbor's street?
Actually, what really happens is somebody starts leasing it under an Airbnb, the neighbor's saying, what the hell?
Well, the, yeah, and that, that's a concern I have of that, it becomes, our enforcement becomes neighbors snitching on neighbors and I'm trying to.
Well, there's a process.
Do things that.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, there's a, and they would have to sort of, they have to go through Airbnb process to get it listed as an Airbnb there.
No, I'm not talking about Airbnbs, I'm just talking about the lease.
I've seen special permits for ADUs where every year, the property owner has to go in to the building inspector and provide leases and provide proof of residency.
Agreed, um.
Owner occupancy or residency.
Yeah, both, that was in our original.
So you walk in, you have your electric bill or whatever, which shows that you're, you know, living there. And then you also have a lease for the ADU. But.
Like a good.
Yeah, so that would, seems like that would go in our regulations, well, yeah.
Yeah.
No, it would be, a requirement of the special permit.
Right, yeah.
Pursuant to the regulations.
Yeah.
So do you want?
Well, I think we're trying to change part, we're trying to piecemeal change an ADU bylaw that perhaps should be done in its entirety as opposed to bits and pieces.
But we tried to do that.
We tried to do that, yeah, we tried to do that.
I, I just, I, I think, um, the enforcement piece is an issue and I, I, I agree wholeheartedly with the one-year lease. I just, I think we're rushing it again.
Okay, um, so we have a motion to, I, I think fully, that Chris has made a motion that says, if I understand its evolution, as a condition of the special permit and pursuant to planning board regulations, either the accessory dwelling unit or the main dwelling unit should be occupied by the owner of the property except for temporary absences of up to one year. And the second unit shall be subject to a lease of twelve, of not less than twelve months. Right?
So moved, yes.
That's what you said, I'm seconding that.
Second, okay, moved and seconded, any further discussion? I'll let you vote first. She said yes?
Yeah.
One yes, Ms. Foley.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, so.
Okay, you got that, um, you bet, that's right.
Five, one.
Five, one extension.
Okay. Zero, one.
No, four, one, four, one, four, five, six. Four, one, one.
No, five, five, one, five, zero, five, zero, one.
Five, one, everyone. We have five yeses and one abstention.
Okay. All right, we are, we are cranking through these. All right, um.
So we're done with, um?
I'll, I'll change, short ones, okay, um.
Twelve.
Let's go to twelve. Mike? Do you want?
Yes.
What were them?
So, uh, I would say most, there were the most comments on the planning board associate members issue. Different points of view on that.
So on the, um, I would like the board to maybe reconsider the vote we took on the planning board selecting and maybe go with a joint selection like we do for, uh, vacancies. Vacancies, where there's a joint effort between the select board and the planning board to choose, um, associate members.
That motion?
That's a motion, for the board to reconsider that vote, based on public comment. There is.
Second, I'll second that.
Um, I think we just had one public comment on that angle, I had a few, I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, I, I mean, a lot, we had a lot of public comment on the alternates, but I, I didn't see a whole bunch saying it should be joint, but.
No, correct me if I'm wrong, so.
I think I.
There was a combination of election.
So.
Planning board appoint.
Which, which persons got to be elected, when?
Right. Um.
So I have a, I have an alternate proposal regarding this discussion, so we could be elected, but in the event that there. So we could be elected, but in the event that there, no one is elected, but no one runs, in that case, the planning board will select the, will select the associate.
I think the mass general laws, um, was.
There was a comment.
Town council said it was a policy decision.
Yeah.
The thing, the problem is if they're elected, no one runs, which is likely.
That's the point, it's, the other thing is the nice thing about having the associate members, you can have people with specific expertise who don't want to. It's a way to get people into town government without the running for office, which is challenging and, um, and time consuming and adversarial sometimes. And, uh, I think we, we open our, we have an opportunity to bring in people with specific expertise to wait, to help us with special permits, so.
I guess, I'm not seeing that argument because that's why we have the eighty-one G, I mean, that's why we have the ability to hire experts for the special permit process. So, that, that argument really isn't as strong with me.
Yeah, and why would they come in? And, and, you know, we may not need them, right, so I, I, I'm not.
Yeah, we may not, probably won't.
Yeah.
Well, I'll agree to Chris's friendly amendment.
I'm sorry, could you repeat it?
So Chris's amendment was to acquire elected and if they weren't being elected, then they would be appointed.
Election.
At the election. They'd be appointed as if.
With a joint, by a joint, uh.
As if they were a vacancy.
No.
By a joint.
It isn't a vacancy, and that's my concern, this is an independent board. I'll, I'll go with the idea that this, this is, um, an appointment and someone resigns, fine, but this isn't, we're creating a new position and this is an independent board. So I do, I'm opposed to a joint appointment. I mean, I, in this current day and age, with Zoom and being able to participate Zoom with a majority here, I'm actually unsure, in my opinion, I'm not really sure we even need this. But I am opposed to a select board, we're an independent board and thus, if we're gonna create this position, it should be controlled by ourselves.
Any other discussion?
I'm very much opposed to having it be an elected position, I feel like, elect, that's a huge burden, we won't, it'll be. I, I, whether it's the planning board, the planning board, the select board, I don't have a strong feeling, but it's, it's an opportunity to say to some, to have someone who has. Technical expertise, doesn't wanna get in the fray of the politics of running for office and filing your disclosure requirements, you know, we all have to file financial. In conflict, take your conflict of interest training, which they would have to do, of course, but, you know, there's like all these burdens of elected and they might, and they, we want. You know, a retired engineer who just wants to help the town on a limited basis for three months. And, and if they have to be elected, you know, and to me, that's just a burden, that's, um.
But they're appointed for three years, so what do you mean just for three months?
His proposal that they'd be elected, right?
Well, they'd be elected for three years, you know, so I don't understand that three months.
Yeah. Well, because if we, if it came to pass that we needed someone.
We needed them to reweigh in on a.
They'd only be for three months, so you'd be elected and you, and you may never have to attend a planning board.
Right, right, right.
Planning board jury duty.
Right, right.
And you don't have to be an engineer.
No, no. I don't know, if it's a, if it's a, you know, a site plan that has, I don't know, water issues that might be, I don't know, whatever the issues are.
I'm not really following what you're saying, like, they have to come to the planning board many, if they're gonna participate.
For the special permit.
For that, for that special permit.
Most associate members.
They're not coming every year.
Would show up just because they wanted to understand what was going on, but, I don't know, I just think that to have another elected office is a burden.
We, we limit our pool of people who might, so, I, I.
No, I admit I don't feel strongly about it one way or the other.
Um, I don't feel stra- I just, I feel strongly that associate members are a good addition. I think we have a risk particularly of the, some eventuality there, one person's resigned, one person's sick and one person has conflict of interest on. An adult entertainment establishment and it gets constructively approved. That is not out of the realm of possibility and we need to protect against that.
Well, so.
So, there was public comment on that and we wanna get this twelve passed.
Right. Do we wanna? Right.
So, do we wanna then that? You know, what's the eyes on the prize kind of thing?
Right. I guess I, to get it passed, I don't really, I feel like having the planning board appoint the person and it keeps it within the planning board, it doesn't, doesn't, um, it keeps it within our elected. But it allows us to appoint people who are interested in that and, uh, to have them elected, but we can vote it. My turn.
Any further discussion on Chris's motion, Ms. Foley?
Might be the.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm intrigued by the elected part, I think, you know, we're all elected to do the job, um, if somebody's gonna step in for one of us to do the job. Perhaps they should be elected as well, um, and I know there was some comparison to the ZBA, which is already an appointed board, so it's, again, comparing apples and oranges. And, um, I do think that if, if it were to be elected and then nobody ran and appointed, it should be strictly planning board. Select board appoints associate members for the ZBA because they appoint all of the ZBA members, so I don't know why the select board would wanna cross over into an elected planning board.
They already do.
Because they do it, they do it when we have vacancies.
Yeah, but the vacancy is for a less than a year time and this is for a three-year period, so you're kind of locking somebody in. You know, uh, you know, and maybe you, people get elected or appointed and they get bored and we actually don't have alternates, I don't know, but, um, you know, they decide not to show up. But, um, I think for those reasons, if it, to go the direction of elected, sounds good to me and that it should stay within the planning board realm.
So, any further discussion on Chris's motion? So the motion was to have the member elected and if that didn't come to pass, it would be a joint meeting selection by the select board and planning board. I second that. And so, we'll take a roll call vote, Ms. Foley.
I'm gonna say no, because I don't agree with the joint selection. Oh, I thought it was planning board.
No, it was joint.
It said joint.
Okay.
Well, I'll say yes.
No.
No, because I don't agree with the elec- election part of it.
Okay, that's reasonable.
No.
Do you have a vote, yes?
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we leave it as we originally proposed, which is. The pointing by the planning board.
Or, any, is there a term?
For a three-year term, or is the, um.
So I do think there is some merit.
The two associate members may be appointed by the planning board for a three-year term.
And is there a second?
Uh, it should say staggered terms.
The way it's written right now, that's what was voted on.
Cause I know, I'm just asserting that, that we don't make any change.
Oh, okay, let's move on to that.
Well, it's, I wanna make sure it says staggered terms, whereas.
Staggered.
Why would it be staggered?
Just like on the ZBA, because you don't want everybody up at the same time and then you might not have anybody.
That's fine.
Okay, staggered.
For staggered, adding the word staggered.
I thought that was.
Next.
Is that, uh, we should vote, are we not gonna vote on it, or we should vote that?
Uh, motion to add staggered, uh.
And, and to keep it as is.
And keep as is, there is.
Could you just repeat it, I'm really, I think people are tired and just not speaking clearly, or I'm not hearing clearly, could you just repeat it, please?
So the, it's just to leave it as is with the addition of staggered three-year terms, uh, page, bottom of page two.
It was on this, staggered.
Yeah, staggered on that, that's why I'm confused what we're doing.
Okay, maybe, um, the good deleted in the, um.
It says.
I'm using the handout, I'm, I'm referring to the handout that, that Betsy provided tonight.
So I printed this out Sunday morning and it says, planning board for staggered three-year terms for the review of special permit application. When city members of the planning board may be unable to perform their duties. Why would that have been taken out?
Whatever the case, let's, uh, let's keep.
Well, what else was taken out, it's not whatever the case, like, it's hard to follow this, not whatever the case, like, we read this, we reviewed it and we're commenting on things that already went in.
Make, make a motion, make a motion.
My motion.
So, for what, I'm trying to figure out what we're going on, I can't hear this, it's, I can't find the document, like, don't make a motion, I'm trying to understand what we're voting on.
I think we are.
And I don't think that's unreasonable.
If you remember the beginning of the meeting, Betsy was asked to have town council review, um, this section, which she did. And then she gave us a handout, which, um, had the, you are correct, the, the word staggered was removed. So we're adding it back in to, to say two associate members may be appointed by the planning board for staggered three-year terms.
That's your motion?
That's my.
And I second it.
Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Foley.
Yes.
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 No.
Okay. All right.
Wait, did you say plating board?
What?
You said plating board, right?
Yes.
Needs to be.
Plating board.
Okay, um, so I'm gonna move, uh, that, um, we move forward with the handout version of section twelve point O administrative and procedures. Provided by Betsy Ware on February twenty-sixth.
I'll second.
Actually, I'm gonna, um, with the, with the deletion of upon conviction.
Did we have any other comments besides the?
No, we haven't.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we all go ahead with this? First on the public?
Yeah. Oh.
Uh, let's see.
Mostly on the, uh.
So wait a minute, you wanna delete upon conviction?
Oh, wait, yeah, that must be, we sort of discussed that previously.
No, we didn't.
We didn't necessarily.
I'm not sure.
We wanted definition of, of, um, what the process is in town for the building inspector, what, how does he convict somebody?
He goes to the town administrator and the board of selectmen and he gets permission to access legal counsel and the finances to sue somebody.
Is that what town council said?
Uh huh. I don't think that's what we intended to do with this whole thing, we intended to him to write a fine, and so I feel like if we're gonna do this, we need to make sure that our building inspector can write a fine.
Yeah, like.
Well, that's non-criminal disposition.
It would have to be a civil.
So to the town administrator's point tonight, uh, uh, we're not clarifying this section for the building inspector to administer fines. And that should have been one of our goals.
Right.
So, I think we either hash that out now or put this on hold.
Maybe add some language to that.
So isn't that what the non-criminal disposition? Well, in addition to the procedures for enforcement as described in the previous paragraph, provisions of this bylaw may be enforced by the inspector of buildings by non-criminal complaint pursuant to provisions of general law forty eighty-one D. The penalty for violation of any provision in this bylaw shall be twenty-five dollars to the first offense, fifty for the second, hundred for the third, two hundred for the fourth and subsequent.
But I think that's what we currently have and it's not.
Well, is he just not ticketing people or?
I think the definition of violations are, um, he, he's, I think it's hard for us to sit here and assert whether a violation is in fact incurring. We don't see the building pro- plans and building code or the, the plans in front of us, like, I, I don't. So I think there are two problems, one is that we, um, people believe that there are violations that are going unenforced. But we don't have a way to, uh, I don't at least have knowledge enough of the matters before the building inspector to determine that, first of all. And second of all, um, I think we don't fully understand the building inspector's enforcement provisions. So I was gonna suggest that we leave it as written, but that we put on our, our to-do list to have a meeting with the, maybe town council and the building inspector and, and Greg. To understand enforcement, so that when we are asked, we will understand it, um, and, um. But overseeing the building inspector, let's, if he is or is not doing his job, is not our job.
No, and I don't think that's what the town administrator said, I think what he said is we need a section in here that, um. Clearly outlines the fee, how the, how the building inspector is enforcing the, the fees. And I would, I'm unclear why we would ask for residents to vote on an administrative, administration and procedures section and leave out a whole chunk of it.
I mean, this was one of the initial goals five years ago, I mean, this was a complaint, it's been a complaint in this town for twenty years, so.
What is the specific suggestion? I mean, my understanding from what Greg said is the whole reason that we wanted to put this in here was so that the building inspector could issue fines. Is he still on?
Greg is on, uh, I can ask him if he has any comments on this, he's been, Greg, are you, uh, listening to this?
I am. So, I, I agree with what Betsy just said, we, we need that non-criminal disposition language, that, that is currently not in our bylaw. So by adding that language, you would give that extra enforcement capability to the building inspector.
So, may I ask, cause the, the, that paragraph says, in addition to the procedures for enforcement as described in the previous paragraph. And the previous paragraph is the conviction paragraph, but nobody understands how a conviction happens. How does a conviction happen then that, that then falls?
It takes them to court.
No, we don't have to take them to court for a ticket, this is the issue.
No, you have a hearing.
A hearing or they pay the fine, there is an entire guide on this and we need to write a regulation and a schedule of fees, which we just haven't done the work. Like, this is the problem, like, we just haven't dived into this.
Would it be helpful to know what chapter forty, section twenty-one D says?
It's it, that's this whole section where you need like a chart within regulations and it clearly defines what the fees will be, who the enforcing person is. Um, with them, it's a whole, it's really just a regulation section, so perhaps we need to add some more language, I just feel we're at the ninth hour or the eleventh hour, again.
Think that's true, um, I'm looking at it right now and it's, uh, it's actually helps us, I think. Can I just summarize it for a second? It says, any such ordinance or bylaw shall provide that any person that has a violation, um, to, that, uh. The enforcing person is an alternative, is an alternative to initiating criminal procedures, shall, uh, offer written notice to the clerk. And such notice shall be in triplicate, blah, 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 the enforcing person, she'll deliver it and that's delivery. And before the, um, the enforcing person, she'll give as commanding officer, blah, blah, blah. So it's all about how you know, deliver notice to somebody who has made an offense. And, um, what the person who is offended is, is entitled to. And, um, I think it does spell out things and given that this is not in our current bylaw, seems to me it's a step forward.
And so, when we say pursuant to the provisions of chapter forty, section twenty-one D, that's just what you were reviewing, Sarah?
Yeah.
I think if you keep reading, you need to lay out some, like, uh, some more information.
This does not say, I don't think this says anything, the town shall lay out fines.
We, it's our, um, this is where we were talking about the numbers, this is where we have to come up with that fee, that fine chart. We have to come up with the, um, what we're gonna charge people if they violate this.
Is, is that the twenty-five, fifty, hundred?
Word chart is not in this section.
So if you look at other communities, how they do that, there's another document that you need to reference that references what the fines are.
So can this be a regulations?
Yeah, yes.
So why don't we just say subject to playing word regulations and then?
I think it has to be, I was just trying to look it up, I think it needs to be a little.
I think it's a planning board regulation. I think it's a planning board regulation. I think it's a regulation of the community.
So Sarah, when you read that, you mentioned written notice. Do we, we need to add that to 12.2.3?
No, it's, we're sub saying that it is, that our town bylaws are sub, are using the provisions in Section 21D. And it says.
No, you said that they would have to get, that they would have to get written notice.
The person, the enforcing person, the enforcement person, the building inspector, delivers to the offender a copy of the notice. So you have to tell your person that you're, to give them some sort of notice, right? And it says what that process is.
And that's all spelled out in the statute that we referenced.
Right.
So it's subsumed within.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
So the beginning part says, "Any city or town, may by ordinance or by bylaw, not inconsistent with this section, provide for non-criminal disposition of violations of any ordinance or bylaw or any rules or regulations of any municipal officer, board, or department, the violation of which is subject to specific penalty."
So that's where we have to exactly come up with a regulation to come up with the penalties.
But it can't be inconsistent with this.
No, it is consistent.
And this provides many things that if we don't have this in here, we don't have.
Right.
I'm just, we need this? I don't think it's enough, though. We need to be able to write something else.
Legal counsel thought that the section of enforcement with 12.2.1, 12.2.2, and 12.3.3 was sufficient.
Well, town council doesn't live in Manchester, by the way.
And the sum cannot exceed $300.
Is that what the state law says too?
Violation.
Right. She did mention that you could up the violation to $300.
Pardon? It says $300 each offense.
So we could say in accordance with state law there?
Between the.
Not even.
And we say 2500 and 200.
So should we just say?
25, 50, 100, 200.
So what other communities have done is like, they all have the fee schedule in one place because this is not just, they have the health department, they have everything in one. We just.
But we're not gonna put the health department fees in zoning.
No, it's not in zoning. It's a regulation that preferences all the fees.
Okay. So that would be separate from zoning. So that doesn't preclude if, if, if.
It doesn't preclude the board of selectmen for adopting a whole slew of different fees.
Right. What if we said, or the penalty for violation shall be blah, 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 or as adopted by the town elsewhere or something, you know, or something.
I think you leave this as is and then the board of selectmen can work with the building inspector on adoption of.
I mean, the point is not the fees. The point is compliance.
Right.
Right? And having fees that are sufficiently. So I just hate to hold up our rewriting of the administrative section to.
Yeah, it sounds like it's covered and the town council is.
Right.
I think I gave you town council's comments on this.
You did.
Yeah. Okay. Did we clarify if the upon conviction stays in or goes out?
I think it stays in.
What was that question?
Stay upon conviction is recommended to stay in by council.
Those words.
Yeah. Okay. So I go back to, were there other potential changes?
No. Not that I know of anyway. So what did we say about the site plan section?
Right.
Site plan was that basically any special permit granting authority can issue site plan. So for.
No, I meant being consistent throughout the other site plan.
So the reason they're not consistent is because.
There's a difference.
Some site plan reviews are for special permits, in which case they can be restricted. Some are for Dover and with churches where they don't have to be, they can be well-ruined. And that's why they're not consistent.
No, and Laura was saying that the other night, but actually the Dover site plan, in many respects, is stricter than this site plan. So that's why I was questioning it. So for Dover, they require a stamped registered professional civil engineer and we don't.
Is that the only thing with the stamp?
No, no, no. The regular site plan requires that too.
In this section, we're reviewing?
Yeah.
We just say you can be a landscape architect, professional engineer of the Commonwealth, or a registered architect. We don't, if you can show me that section, that would be great.
Well, 12.6.4 says shall be prepared by, I guess it doesn't say stamped by, but it says stamped by.
Well, it's licensed by.
And so there's that, the stamped, which I would add. The, you know, and then the site plan in here versus the site plan, what is it, seven point something, I forget. But like the elevation requirements are different for the, for the site plan. I just didn't know why they would be so different. It doesn't make sense. And I thought that's what Laura was gonna review.
Right, she did not do that. She. Are the site plan for the Dover more restrictive or more specific?
In some areas.
Yeah.
Can I make a suggestion that we ask Betsy to combine 12.6.4, 12.8.5, and, that was the two site plan pieces into one coherent list with, you know?
Site, wait a minute. Site plan, 12.6.4 says prepared by registered architect, landscape architect.
It says stamped.
Engineer licensed in the Commonwealth of Mass.
Essentially. The Dover has just got more, I mean, a stamped plan has a locus, a stamped plan has a north, I mean, or it's.
Right.
It's, it's, I think we could combine the two and then under 12.8.5, reference back to the complete list, which is in 12.6.4.
So you're saying the site plan.
Just put one list.
Context would be the same for both.
Yeah.
Nothing criteria.
What about the one that was passed in the fall?
Or we already have it in there? Let's reference that one. Those are more the considerations, aren't they?
Yeah, they're criteria.
So the performance standards for special permits and site plan, this?
That's performance standards as opposed to application standards.
Yeah. There's a typo in that section.
Of course.
Of course there is.
You could, the town clerk, as she's doing it, should be able just to fix that. We determined that's okay. Site developments? No, site.
So it, what do you, it's, so I think it is the performance one, which is 6.3.
Yeah, that doesn't say.
That's not the, that's not the submission requirements.
No. But it does get into application requirements in 6.4.4. And it talks about the scale, which this one is one inch equals 40 feet. And then in the other one, we say one inch equals 200 feet. And then this also has the.
No, but those are locus maps.
Oh, the other one says one inch to what, 600?
2000.
Site plan is one inch of 40 feet.
Yeah, that's what the detail, the 600 is just to say where it is in town.
Yeah.
So with a 600, one, 2000.
That's pretty minor.
I don't know. It's not really a big deal.
I would just leave it as is.
It does say on number three on the Dover, stamped by a registered professional civil engineer and a land surveyor, or should that be?
It should be four.
And it shouldn't say, again, Commonwealth of Massachusetts registration. We don't want.
So is this Dover language? I thought this would be boilerplate from the state. Is this stuff that somebody wrote?
12.5? Looks like it's.
12.8? Who wrote that?
Good question.
12.8.5 or 2.
No, 12.8 total is a bunch of stuff.
I thought the Dover.
If you look up the Dover and see.
I mean, this is what was proposed last fall.
Yeah, I'm just wondering who wrote it.
Probably Bobrowski.
Probably Bobrowski.
So I would have thought.
That's probably.
No?
Boilerplate from Dover, I would think.
Yeah, probably.
Boilerplate from Bobrowski, probably.
I don't think he's.
Yeah, he is.
And I don't think he has that skill set. No, no, no.
Yeah, he does. He does. Oh, yeah, he drafts people's bylaws all the time.
No, but I mean on site plan, all this engineering stuff.
Yeah.
All that stuff.
Okay.
So what do you think about my idea about just making one list? Combining the two lists in a coherent way? You don't wanna just duplicate them? No, you don't think so? You think they?
I would leave it as is. The more changes you start making, at the end, it's worse. It ends up being a mess.
But I thought the part of recodification was to kind of streamline.
This isn't a recodification.
No, we're not in.
This is not a recodification.
What's the concern with the site plan requirements? It seems, it seems.
I would say.
My concern is, and it's for the simple fact that I thought we were in recodification trying to streamline, make consistent, reduce redundancies, have, like, things the same, and we've got this and it's different.
It's not that the perfect be the end of it.
Why that Dover is different, maybe we.
I don't know what the rationale was for that. I mean, but it went, it's been reviewed now by town council and by Mark Bobrowski.
Right.
Could we ask town council why it's different?
Yeah. I do think there are two changes, though. In site plan for Dover, all site plans must be stamped by a registered professional civil engineer or a professional land surveyor.
Registered in Massachusetts.
Yep. And then the other one is in 12.6.4, plans up to site plan review shall be stamped by, as opposed to prepared by. Because stamped and prepared are two different things. And I would argue that most of the requirements under the Dover are appropriate on a stamped plan, like north and.
Okay.
So if we just make those two changes.
Make those changes and everybody be happy?
I mean, to the same note, 12.4.5, planning board powers, without that other section, this went through Bobrowski, town council in the spring and the fall. Like, I just feel like this needs to stay in without the other section being here. I mean, changes at the end, to me, this is unnecessary.
Why did you wanna delete approval not required plans to hear and decide?
Because that is all subdivision, which is a different regulation and a different law. And she didn't want to include stuff that was not zoning.
But we do give, we do define the zoning board of appeals. I guess that's zoning.
It's all zoning.
Other communities have it, especially, again, in light of us not having it in the general bylaws, I think this needs to stay.
I tend to agree with Christina on that. Was there any harm in leaving it in?
She thought it was, well, we read her memo. She didn't think it was appropriate.
Well, I mean, I think we all read the memo and we all heard Bobrowski and we all, this went through town council. We already paid for this twice before and it wasn't flagged.
Yeah, that is a big deal.
Let's leave, okay. We have agreement that we leave those in? Three, four, five, to endorse ANRs to hear and decide out subdivisions and to administer the subdivision control law?
No inflation of town law that's included.
Exactly. Okay. Okay, so I think we.
So you wanna keep those in?
So I think we've got a few changes. One is we're leaving upon conviction. The planning board will be staggered for, the associate members will be stag for three, for staggered three-year terms. I'm gonna keep in the, endorse those three responsibilities. And we are going to change on page four, it's a stamped plan. And it's only one person needs to stamp it in the, on page 11.
Wait, on page four, stamped plans.
It's 12.6.4, instead of shall be prepared, shall be stamped.
On page four?
Six, sorry, six. No, page six, 12.6.4.
Shall be prepared and stamped.
Yep. And then the last one.
Page 11, it should say, or, and then registered in.
Massachusetts.
On the wealth of mass.
All right.
So that was kind of a, is that the motion?
That's the motion.
Second, how second it?
What was the motion?
Well, section 12.
You just went through all those changes. Were you joking or do you want to?
Oh, I just was, was just saying to incorporate the changes. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
Where do the changes begin? This is a section 12. Do you want me to read them again?
We're past the board composition, right?
Yes. Okay.
Roll call, Miss Foley.
For the amendments to that, to change, those four changes.
Adopt the whole thing.
Adopt the whole thing.
Adopt the whole thing. I still think, sloppy's not the right word. I still think that there's, there's gaps. I'm gonna say no.
Yes.
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 Stupidious?
No.
Yes.
Okay.
So at midnight, there is a parking van. Oh, just so. If anyone's on the street after 12:01, you're gonna be towed.
Is it snowing yet? Yeah.
We knew where we went to 11 every single planning board night ever, so. All right. Do you want to take a quick stretch?
No?
Well.
How much more do we have?
We have senior housing and the warrant.
Senior housing and then the remainder of the agenda items. We'll go with them. But I think.
Oh, what else do we have on the agenda?
Pointing of people and.
All right.
Betsy's looking for.
Thanks for coming.
We don't really have to say anything. Okay.
Senior housing.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. God bless. Senior housing. Anything come up on senior housing? I don't think that there was a word.
Yeah, let's see.
We had a couple of things, while she's looking that up, well, we had a couple of things in our pre-meeting discussion. And they were, that we, I wrote down, which was net or gross square feet and if we properly defined the open space requirements.
There was nothing that I think we need to act on. I mean, people expressed opinions about capping, senior housing, sewer system, that the scale should be small in the residential areas, setbacks.
I think there was comments about separating them.
There was one comment about separating them. Yes, one.
We've, but we've kind of discussed.
I dispute that. I.
Okay.
I dispute that. I, um, I have one, two. I have Donna. I have two. I have Donna and Sandy Rogers. And with, um. Separating them? Yeah, because saying, talking about the commercial and the residential piece. Um.
But we've ta, so we've talked about that at, a number of times. I guess the question now is, does the, what we heard change? Just, is there new information that changes? And we voted it a couple of times. Um, does it change any, um, anybody's, uh, mind? And I thought a little bit about it, and I think that, again, it's about sort of the trusting about the special permit as an effective vehicle for creating and ensuring that scale is appropriate. And, um, I'm, uh, that he, I'm com- competent in my own mind that, that the special permit process does. And one thing I thought about in, in the last week was I had used the example of my own home, which is on septic. And so, you know, I said, what if I wanted to change it to four units? There'd be parking. And it's not, the biggest thing in my particular home is that I probably wouldn't be able to fit a expanded septic system, um, in my particular lot. So that's another, my point being not, is that it's another constraint on a significant expansion in a residential district. That is not in the sewer.
So that's actually one of my concerns with the 4A zoning, like where all this is going to be burdened is the communities and the neighborhoods that are on sewer. So the neighborhoods that are going to be burdened with the extra density are gonna be those sewer lines, and those who are not are going to get the benefit of the less density. So this is an actual concern of mine, so.
We're not talking about the 3A right now.
We're talking about all density in general. So densities will be increased where there's sewer lines, not so much where there's septic. So it's an overall general concern, so, um, I, I think the burden of density will be where there's a sewer line, whether it's ADUs or if it's senior housing or if it's MBTA zoning, it will be on the sewer line, so. For your exact reason. Another thing that I did not see in this, and I don't know how many we have, I tried to do a bit of research and I'm thinking I'm only coming up with Pine Street. I could be wrong. There's no mention of deeding these seniors. So there's nothing about these being approved through some kind of permit and they being flipped.
Yes, I'm thinking about, how does that usually happen, um, in, uh, other, um, towns? Are they deeded senior housing? Is it, i- in order to get a senior housing, do you deed it in perpetuity or deed it for a duration or, uh, how do they have, how does that happen?
It's in those Hamilton ones that we've all looked at.
It's deeded?
We did a, two projects in Drake it where they were deeded. It was a condition of the special permit.
Yeah, if, if we would like it, there would be a condition of the special permit. I would be amenable to adding that as language that.
I think that's a good.
There'd be deed restricted for senior housing as a condition. But I think it's, I think it's redundant, but I think I would.
Oh, I think it's not redundant.
I don't think it's redundant at all.
Yeah, because that's under state law. That's, that's the definition of senior housing, deed restricted housing for seniors.
No.
Like I say, I'm not opposed to adding it.
Let's add that in.
I mean, my guess, there's a small, a smaller, well, this Berkshire Village, which is the big behemoth, you know, senior housing and congregate care, but then you've got something like, there's a smaller one in, um, in Ipswich on one A.
Sure.
And, um, that used to be the location of a restaurant. It's on a fairly big lot that goes back to the river. And, um, I haven't been inside, but my guess is that that was probably a special permit process with a restriction.
Yeah.
So.
So I guess I have a question for Betsy and Greg. I see you're still on. I've heard some conversations about potentially, um, developers looking at the Gordonland for senior housing. Have you been in contact, have you heard of this? Have you had conversations of people reached out, Greg?
No, not at all.
There is, uh, Wenham, the Wenham side has a specific proposal.
So I guess I would like to make sure that's.
Okay, good. To the point about deeded under, would we, um, add a number four under applicability? Do we have? Um. We say each dwelling shall be occupied by people over sixty-five and then add a four, uh, um. Uh, help me out, Betsy. About it being deeded, uh, the special permit shall require.
Yeah, it's a condition of the special permit, you know, the facility shall be, um, limited to, to those over fifty-five.
Which is added sentence to number three, each dwelling unit shall be occupied by at least one person over the age fifty-five.
So the only difference between three and four is that you wanna deed restricted.
Right.
Yeah, so you add the three.
Shall be, how about deed, each dwelling unit shall be deed restricted to be.
Occupied by, sure.
Each one shall be deed restricted
to be occupied. But I don't know if that's the right language, but I think that's a good addition.
And so some of the other language also talks about, um, a cap on appreciation of the resale of the dwellings.
A cap upon resale dwellings?
So you can't buy if it's a for sale, if it's, these are condos, that you can't flip it and make X percent within a certain amount of time. That keeps it in a certain price range and not increasing in cost.
Wow. I don't know. If I were a senior buying a unit, I'd like that restriction.
Well, but isn't the point to keep housing prices down for this size unit?
Well, it is by making them smaller, yes. That you're just penalizing a senior for buying a condo.
No, I mean, I mean, it's common language.
I've never seen it before.
I've heard of it in other kinds of circumstances when you're creating solely affordable housing.
Yes, it's a condition of affordable house.
But I'm trying to figure out how it would. So I didn't hear all of it, but like, um, where my parents are, if, you know, they, they can only get for their house what they put into their house. And then the de, the, the owner of the development takes that money and then, you know, so let's say the house is a million dollars. They get back the million dollars and then he turns around and like leases it, 'cause you don't buy the land, you just lease the house or whatever, and he'll do it for one point four million dollars, right? So he gets the, the profit. So I could see in that scenario where it's, um, trying to keep things at a reasonable level.
So is it a condo?
It's a house in an assisted living.
It's a house.
Commu, in a community, right? So it's in a stage living community, which is, would fall under this, right? So some people have their individual houses, some people are in assisted living.
But that's not a, probably a deeded restriction by the community. It's a deeded restriction by the developer, the owner of it.
Developer.
Yeah, so I think that, and that's.
Uh, with both, right?
Well, we don't know if it's by the, required by the community and in zoning. That's the question. Right? Um, so. Um. I feel like that's a restriction that is.
I think it's beyond our.
Beyond our.
Yeah, that's an interesting idea, but I, I don't see how you could enforce it.
So then we had the net versus gross.
Yeah, that I think we can deal with right away. The thing is, they have, they have to be net square footages, not gross.
I was gonna say, it has to be gross, just like on the first page, because then you know what size units you're actually getting.
The net is the size of the unit.
Net is the size you're getting.
The grosses was all the stairways and stairs.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But you're not, you can't live in twenty percent of the gross.
Yeah, but you're, that's still part of the building, still part of the.
Well, if you wanna add twenty percent to each of those areas and make it gross, I guess we could do that, but I think it's easier. People are used to living in twelve hundred square foot apartments for a two bedroom unit, not.
I think it's too restrictive to go with.
Yeah, it'd be too tight.
I'm stating my opinion.
Okay.
I'm just thinking.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I would like to move that.
How big are the, like, the planes units? How big are those?
They are one bedroom units and they're, no.
No, they're like five hundred, six hundred?
Probably like eight hundred. Yeah, but we don't know if they're net or gross. Which is the question before us.
They're small.
Um. Okay.
Well, I'd move that they, that the square footage is defined as net gross.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
So the motion was to make it net?
Keep it net. It's still written as net right now.
Well, net, this is new. This isn't what we discussed on Thursday.
Net in all cases.
We have to discuss gross on Thursday.
Right. Well, and they, and it just said twelve hundred for a two bedroom. It didn't say gross or net, so we're either inserting gross or net now, net.
So the motion is for net? And is there any discussion for net? Okay, I'll take a roll call vote then on changing to net, just her only.
Yes.
Yes.
This proposal?
Yes.
Miss Stoliceo?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
No.
Chair votes yes.
Her parents would not be happy.
Well, they don't say the last.
Um, the last, I think, or at least on my list, this, this question, the common open space. So Chris did what we asked him to do, which says, is, as it's proposed, I'm reading from Betsy's handout, number ten. Common open space in residential districts, there shall be an area of common open space at least twenty percent of the lot area. The location and requirements for open space shall conform to the design requirements for open space defined in nine point two, which provides for the development of the residential conservation cluster. Land set aside for sewage treatment facilities may not be included in the calculation of open space. The planning board in its discretion may reduce this requirement. How about change this requirement? Because it could be increasing.
Make it bigger, sure.
Yeah. Um, I think it's fine. I think it's, um, the, I think Mary's point that residential conservation cluster is a different beast, but it does lay out some requirements for open space, so I, I don't have a problem with it.
So can you tell me what the requirements are?
Uh, I don't have the existing bylaw.
I do.
It could be accessible, it could be common ownership or open ownership.
So somebody owns it? Is the, um, it contiguous?
Contiguous.
Um, is it in addition to the purvious and pervious requirement?
No.
So I don't know what we're getting with this then. Back to what I, we discussed last week. I mean, if our goal is to, um, maintain open space or establish open space, this in most districts will just be what's required. Here we go.
I have. You're telling me to read what, what it is?
Yeah.
Okay, required open space. The land area shall not be used for lots, roads, drainage. All land area not used for lots, roads, and drainage should be set aside as open space. A minimum of sixty percent of the upland of the parcel shall be provided as open space, as an exception where the open space is provided to be deeded to the town or qualified land trust. Um, so, uh, a minimum of fifty percent of the upland of the parcel should be provided as open space. Applicants are encouraged to include wetlands and water bodies within the open space. However, they do not count to the open space requirement. Roadways and rights of way shall not count within the area to be provided as open space.
So it'll be deeded to the town?
Yeah, I don't know whether we leave that in a.
It can be deeded, it doesn't have to be.
This is what we asked him to do last time, so whether it's the right thing to do or not. Why can't we just leave it as at least twenty percent of the lot area? And leave it at that?
Write our own open space.
The residential district, so it doesn't apply to G or like the LCD. There is, there's essentially nothing or in G or eighty percent in LCD.
Well, I'd be going to say with so, so twenty percent of open space, I'm using what the.
And we can leave in land set aside for sewage treatment facilities or roadways shall not be included in case, in the calculation of open space. The planning board may, at its discretion, may reduce, may change this requirement.
So what happens if somebody goes ahead and changes the residential conservation cluster?
Requirements? Yeah, that's my concern is it's like.
Is someone now gonna refer to that? We're gonna refer it to this.
Yeah, delete, get rid of that. So.
So what about things like stormwater drainage, drainage ditches, wetlands?
I think we'd leave it to the special permit process. That's what I'm thinking, is that if we're, we're kind of leaving a lot of the things to, we're saying the special permit process is strong, it has the, you know.
So we're deleting the one sentence that says the location and requirements of the open space shall conform to the design requirements of the open space specified in section nine point two of the bylaw.
That's my proposal.
Yeah, okay, so that one sentence goes out.
Right, and then, and then change it to the board at its discretion or in its discretion, whichever it is, may change this requirement or modify. Reduce or increase, maybe, till we get, so we're clear.
If it's, if that's the motion, I'll second it.
How about reduce or increase?
Yeah. Are you putting contiguous in there?
I think this is way too big. So it should be an area of.
Inaccessible? Maybe that's not the right word. Residents can walk to it.
It's an accessible, access. So I'm gonna open space.
I'm gonna open space, yeah.
We still have the A D D stuff.
Yeah. It's, uh.
Well, you know, just being in ten and eleven and, you know, everything that we, so many of these items that we're saying we require, require, and then we say, but planning board may reduce this requirement. I just, it doesn't make any sense.
So there was a motion to approve that?
Yeah, to delete the.
As a, the cus, cluster and then add in that language you were, uh, drafting? Is that the motion?
So, so it reads residential districts, there'll be an area of common open space equal to twenty, at least twenty percent of the lot area. Land set aside for sewage treatment plant, suit, sewage treatment facilities or roads may not be included in the calculation of open space. Planning board at its discretion may reduce or increase.
Why don't we just say increase? Because we say at, at least twenty percent of. Otherwise, it's just, to Mary's point, it's just a recommendation.
So may, may increase this requirement.
I would say if we have another area of the bylaw that, you know, there's a percentage that can be used for driveways or pavement, so we should put something like that in there. We don't have more specifics, because we wouldn't want all the open space to be paved or gravel. No, because I think we talked about, like, you can't. Well, we had it.
So we have a definition of open space.
So building coverage, no, we don't. Building coverage, it says, imagine building coverage including all buildings accessory relation with certain requirements of for new construction or expansion in that district. So the building coverage, which is the first you change it. And that's gonna be affected by whether you're in the, what a resource district is.
Right, but.
He doesn't leave any class.
But you could, as people are doing, just have the gravel driveway, right? And so then that.
But in many respects, gravel driveway, if you talk with most engineers, they'll say it's an impervious surface.
Oh, I agree.
Because it could impact staff.
Oh, I agree, but that doesn't stop the.
It's not the, so yes, you can maximize the building lot coverage and then you use the rest of the space in many of the districts when it's not a lot for gravel driveways, and this is not in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, because now you have no green space, so I've been pushing for a minimum of green space versus open space, but I haven't gone as far. So there's many lots that there's nothing there except for gravel driveways and a big building.
So excluding driveways, excluding.
So land set aside for sewage treatment or driving, driveways and parking?
Yeah.
And it also.
Sewage treatment, driveways and parking.
The other bylaw also limits how much of the wetlands can be used for open space, because obviously that's not space that you could use.
Oh, it says not.
Yeah.
Including wet ones.
Driveways, parking, and wetlands.
So what about roads or taking?
Yeah, we have roads in there.
Well, driveways.
Good sewage treatment facilities, roadways, parking and wetlands.
So Summer Hill, was that the one, the last one that we did? Not Summer Hill.
Up by the old Riding Ring?
No.
Mollia?
Yeah, that one.
Sir Village or.
Sir Village, thank you. I mean, that one, I guess, had a, a lot of ledge that wasn't usable. I mean, there was arguments that you can't use that, so I feel like we need to massage this a little bit to make sure we're getting what we want.
But ledge. I don't know if ledge is open space or not. I would think it's.
I mean, the purpose of open space is that you can passive recreation.
I think it's also lot coverage and.
Can we say usable open space with that picket?
Recreational open.
Recreational.
Common open space?
We have common open space.
Well, we don't.
You could do rock climbing on a ledge.
Not if you're a senior.
All those seniors.
So I don't think. So we don't have a definition, right, for open space? It's not defined in section two.
I mean, it's not in the definitions either.
No, it's not.
I mean, I, I feel like, again, especially, I have a lot of confidence in special permit. In the residential districts should be area of common open space equal to at least twenty percent of the lot area. Land set aside for sewage treatment, ride, roadways, parking and wetlands shall not be included in the calculation of open space. The planning board at its discretion may increase this requirement.
If it's ledge, we, it's ledge, we have the out, we can increase it. And anything else we find, it should, you know, under like.
Can we say like the intent is for passive recreation? I mean, something to that, to give a little more something.
Can we say open space accessible to residents?
Yeah, common open space. Okay, so now, in residential districts, there should be an area of common open space accessible to residents equal to at least twenty percent of the lot area. Land set aside for blah blah blah. How's that sound?
Yeah.
All right, I have one other change that I think we've missed in this bylaw and that we, we all said, oh, it's in there. I don't see the accessibility.
So I just have an idea for that. So in seven.
Yeah, we add D.
Number B. I would just say D. All E D A requirements shall be met. Period. At least one bedroom.
Always put a D.
Now we can do.
Seven, design standards.
Well, there's, there's a whole bunch of them.
Isn't that, is this for A D A?
So you added D?
All units should be A D A compliant, something like that.
Yes.
Isn't that in the state law?
Yeah, yeah, as we're being redundant, but.
So why are we redundant with that and not other things? I'm getting very confused.
All right, so it's in state law?
Yeah, of course.
Okay. If people are making conversions of existing homes, though.
I was just thinking that.
That's gonna be. I think we should put it in, I think this one is worth putting in.
Oh, well, I'm happy.
Just because.
It's the right thing.
It's the right thing to do.
Compliant, so I. So, except, so A D A compliant, is that a, okay. All right.
So could we talk quickly again, because you said that the state doesn't allow affordable?
Correct, inclusionary zoning is not allowed.
So how is the town, so we can't even say, you know, if somebody wants to build an assisted living facility of a hundred units, we can't say you need to do ten percent affordable somewhere in town?
No, you can't.
You can't. And assisted living, I'm assuming, apply, counts towards dwelling units?
It, it does. Of course, having affordable assisted living is very difficult because most of the cost of assisted living is personal care services.
Right.
You can't discount those.
But I'm thinking of when we say, you know, housing in the limited commercial district has to be synced up with an assisted living so that they, the housing could be.
So the only way this would work, and this is Bobrowski, you know, this is what we're doing with the cluster. We could, a developer comes in for a special permit to build thirty units. And we could say, we'll give you a bonus of an additional five units on that site if.
You make them all.
You make them all affordable, if ten percent of the units are affordable.
Why would they?
We can horse trade, basically.
Why would they jump at that?
Because they get increased density. So you gotta trade something for something.
Why do they want?
Why would a developer want, wanna put in five? I mean, I, I don't know what his incentive would be.
If they, because there's an economy of scale.
Yeah, he builds more units.
Build more units for the existing, um, to, to access the existing.
Toilets.
He can jack up the, the affordable, the, uh, market rate ones.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
So I think, I mean, to me, that's a big one, if, if we're talking about senior housing and it's not gonna trigger our inclusionary zoning, we have to think about that.
Greg, does, is it, is it in fact, if we had a, um, assisted living, is, there's, are, are those housing units? Or do we know for sure?
Oh, in terms of our total housing number?
Yeah.
In assisted living, I don't believe that would count as housing units, but I would have to double check.
I think they are. I think they are too.
I mean, I will say that we already allow assisted living in nursing homes in, in, in any residential district currently by special permit.
Charitable.
Sanatorium, yeah.
Yes, they have to be nonprofit, charitable.
Correct.
So now we're opening it up to, to for profit, so that's a different dynamic.
I think we had this conversation.
Yes.
About we wanted the assisted living and the LCD, and we thought that that was gonna be great and that was gonna, you know, take a chunk of our affordable away, and in the end, a year later, it was found that, no, it wouldn't, so. It would count towards housing, but we couldn't use it for affordable.
Yeah, but we could. I mean, if a developer could come in and say, I'm gonna build this assisted living, and we have these clustered townhomes, and we're gonna say, fine, but ten percent of those are gonna be affordable, and that's a negotiation, and maybe we get there, but it's creating affordable housing.
Wait, why, why could the senior housing townhouses be affordable?
In the special permit process.
It's a condition of a special permit. We can try for anything.
So the state doesn't allow it in the bylaw, but you can do it in the.
That's true, exactly.
In the same way with a. Never mind, I'm just confusing, I'm confusing issues. I'll just, it's late. Okay, so we're close on this. Um, I think we've, uh, any other changes that? I mean, I think there were, um, there was discussion on some of the issues that we've already discussed. I don't know if I heard anything new.
I think we had it all.
Yeah, okay. All right, I'll make the motion to approve the senior housing as amended.
One second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Chris Olmey's?
Yes.
Yes.
Miss Filbert?
Yes.
Miss Filizio's?
No.
Miss Foley's?
No.
And the chair votes yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, that's the four.
So then we have, um, the move to, uh, uh, advance these four to the warrant with the, um,
What did you change?
With the, um, warrant as presented with, to be, uh, evaluate, to be subject to, uh, you know, edits from the select board as needed.
So I'll move that.
So these changed.
They changed, uh, so we'll have that, we will, what do you mean, they changed?
Well, like for article.
Oh, yeah, the, the I D U one needs to get changed.
Yeah.
Yep. With changes to reflect tonight's changes. How's that sound?
I would like to see a final copy of stuff before we go.
I, well, I might suggest, I was gonna suggest something about seeing final copies, so.
So this is being presented to the select board on Monday.
Next Monday.
So I'm either, I'm gonna be making these changes either tomorrow or Thursday.
Okay.
Probably tomorrow, just to get them done.
So I was gonna suggest that we, um, if you get them out to us, we could proofread them. Maybe we need to post from Monday just to have a.
Click me?
Yeah, I can't be here.
I'm gonna go to select board.
I don't know. I'm gonna send you or Chris.
Check my calendar for Monday. I don't think I have.
Chris can go.
I can go.
Chris will go.
Can we?
Do they meet at six thirty?
I can go, I might be able to go early or late, I don't know. I had something come up this afternoon.
Greg, what time is the select board meeting on Monday and expecting this warrant discussion?
Uh, the meeting will start at six thirty. Um, the warrant discussion will be later in the agenda, probably closer to eight.
Yeah, so we can meet at seven.
Is that a Zoom meeting?
It's hybrid.
It's, it's a hybrid.
Okay.
So we can meet next door at seven and then come in here and do that.
And it's, the purpose is to proofread the changes, proofread the changes. We voted them, it's really to make sure that they've been.
And if they, if they are all fine, do we need to have a meeting?
No, I don't, well, I'll drop to the board.
I mean, I, I need to get them to Greg by before Monday.
You need to get the warrant to Greg with the dra, the, the motions. The motions can be, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, but if there are changes to the motions because we haven't properly transcribed tonight's work, we have, we could do that some other, we have a few days on that, right?
I don't think you wanna make a change on the town meeting floor. No, no, we don't.
Right, but if, if we're going to print the motions and get them distributed with everything else, they need to be printed in, in the scout's hands by the, right in the tent.
Hold ten days.
Yeah, wow, that's a, that's a neon town. But when do they go to the printer, Greg?
Seven.
The seventh, seven.
We also gotta get them on the website, public.
I think it's a, it's, I mean, we've voted them, the question is that we have, do we have any, not do we make substantive changes, but do the most, do, it's just a check on the, on the, uh.
So if I send them out?
Can we put them out and then have comments sent to, to Betsy within a meeting? Uh, you know, we just have.
Yeah, then if we need to meet next week to actually hash through something, we can.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
I think I took a pretty good one this week. Yeah, but I need to.
Whenever you get ready, you let us know, and we'll get you done.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
I'll get them done tomorrow.
It's supposed to be raining and snowing tomorrow, so.
Right.
Hope you don't lose power up there, you know.
Wouldn't be the first time.
Okay. We're done with that? I know everybody wants to beat the, uh, snow.
The parking ban.
So are we gonna table the rest of this? Is that the idea? The rest of the agenda?
I think we'll have to work pretty quickly. Quick update on the M B T A task force. You went to Croft, we sent it in our, you're looking for.
We sent in a tap, we sent in a tap, um, grant, which is for, um, basically M A P C to help us out with this specific program of, um, that is required for M B T A zoning. And, um, I also had a follow-up discussion on the transportation, uh, on the parking grant that was being done by M A P C downtown. And because we haven't started the M B T A zoning analysis, and they wanna close up the grant, they wanna finish off the grant, I worked a deal with them that basically if we have sites downtown, they will come back to us and fill in and run the models. So, um.
When do we have to get back with them with sites?
Like, eight months a year. So.
Great.
Anyhow, um, so, and they were also gonna put in a good word, um, on the tap grant. So that was, that was good.
Betsy, can I ask a couple of questions on that? What other, um, sources have you applied for grants for that?
We haven't applied for anymore right now, because I've been working on this. I'm limited to twenty-three hours a week. Sue Croft and I have looked at a number of different grants and, um, I've talked with, um, Mass Housing Partnership, um, they are in limbo right now in terms of offering grants. And I ended up contacting Department of Housing and Community Development, and we're looking at grants that they may be offering.
Yeah, 'cause my, my concern obviously is M A P C, um, if you look at their website, they're, they're quite biased on this, so I think it's important for the town to get an independent.
What do you mean they're biased on this?
Um, they're pushing for every community to, to do the M B T A forty how.
Well, they helped, they helped Middleborough get out of it.
What's that?
They helped Middleborough get out of it.
So I'm just saying what's on their website, right? So I think it's important for Manchester to get a unbiased, um, take, and so I'm concerned if we're just applying to one, so I'm glad that we, hopefully, will be applying to more. And then, just my other question is, can you post the grant on the grant page? The grant application on the grant page?
I can ask Sue to.
Okay, thanks, Betsy. Um, so last meeting, we decided to go with the task force. I'd like to appoint, uh, Chris Olmey and Sue Filbert to fill those positions from representing us. And I think I've spoken to both and both have accepted.
Yeah.
So. Thank you for serving. Report back to us. On the harbor management plan working group, um, they're also looking for a planning board member, and I asked Sarah. And I asked Sarah Creighton to be our representative, she's a boat owner, has some intimate knowledge of the harbor. I thought she'd be a good choice and she's accepted, so thank you. Serving. MAPC traffic study, I don't think we have any information on that, do we need, are they coming back?
They're coming back in March, I've gotten comments from three people, which I forwarded on to MAPC.
Could I just make a comment too, so we discussed it at a meeting, so all my comments were made at a meeting when, after the present, first presentation? So that's why I didn't rewrite them up.
We look at those minutes.
I think you've got so much on your plate, Mary Ann, is it possible?
It was December, it was in December, it was December 12th or 9th that Audi came in, gave the presentation, so I'll just copy those minutes to them.
I mean, I can write it up, 'cause I don't know, that minutes don't really capture.
Would it be better to postpone these people?
I think it's. No, they really need to get this down.
I think it'd be great if, I mean, Betsy has a lot on her plate with trying to get these done, if we could just jot the, the notes down to her, I think that's what we had agreed we would do.
So as Betsy told everyone, the attorney general has approved our. November town meeting zoning reclassification items. Any update, I think you informed the board of that, right?
Right, so the town clerk and I have a, an agreement that she will integrate the articles into the zoning. And then she will ask me to review it. And so I'll review, if I see any problems, I'll redline them and I'll get it back to her and then we will sit down and hash it out. So, and. A little while ago, we had a situation where I think it was Mark Glovsky said that the. One that was online was not accurate, and this was actually right after both the town clerk and I had our surgeries. And so I ended up reviewing the language and I found it was either six or seven omissions. So went back through, corrected it all, gave it back to her, so it was the reverse of what we're doing. And she double-checked my work, so.
Great, thank you.
So it's.
And some of those got, got, some of those changes got superseded by the second, new section six. This most recent section.
Wasn't there several comments that said, refer to town council?
About.
Several comments that the attorney general said in section four.
Oh, said, because there was. Basically, what the AG's office wanted was for the planning board or whatever board who was gonna be the decision maker. There were certain things that were protected by Dover amendment. And so basically to consult with legal counsel before you started decision-making.
So are we doing that, do we submit it to them? Didn't they want language change, take things out, that's how I read it.
I, my understanding is that it was on a case-by-case basis that. That the AG's office wanted us to look, you know, the board to look at it. So.
Can I maybe suggest that Sue, maybe you have them, I'm gonna point it out right there. As an attorney. Just. Review it and maybe Betsy and Sue summarize it for us at the next meeting. It's not difficult.
Sure.
I didn't read it, I confess.
Well, here it's proper application.
It actually says to refer to town council for certain provisions, so I, I don't think this is a case-by-case basis.
Hope you guys get together.
I mean, I thought it was kinda curious that.
Right.
That letter came back with so many kind of caveats, because most of the time.
So I guess the question is, well, how do we write the zoning to reflect the caveats? That's, that's the question that we probably can't resolve tonight, but that's the question for you guys and town council.
This letter says to go to town council, I'm, I'm, I'm just not sure that this is, it says like part of our table. Is discriminatory, so I just, I think there needs to be some significant changes, I don't think they're not approving it, but I think there needs to be a lot of work with this letter. And it says town council, doesn't say town planner, I mean, so if this was what the attorney general asked us to do, I'm not sure why we're not complying with.
Well, does it make sense to get KP Law to look at the AG's opinion and say, this is, you need to do A, B, C, D? That's what I was asking.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Although it does say the proper application of this portion of the table, they're not saying rewrite the table. But I think that would be the safe thing to do, definitely.
Right.
Okay, so I'll push those on to KP Law and we'll get a response for next time. Okay. Just on this, we have minutes from December. I looked at them, I think they were okay, except for one line. I don't know if Gail was still on.
Yeah, it was probably still on.
It's the only move to continue a public hearing on Manchester Park and Rack, parking lot and field. Ms. Tenny seconded the motion, the passed with Mr., it says the passed, it should say, it passed. That's the only comment I had, anyone else have comments?
I didn't look at them.
I moved to approve the minutes of December 12th with that change. Your second. Anybody object? So moved, publish them. Reminder, everyone, you have to take the conflict of interest training by March 16th. I think that includes everyone here. So our next meeting will be with the Board of Selectmen to finalize the warrant on March 6th and our next meeting is the 13th, so as of now. Any information?
I, oh, one comment from.
Comments from the board.
To, to, to the board, but to Betsy, because I think it's great news that we got FEMA, some FEMA.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's, that's right.
And I did wanna, so the board to know that, I haven't had a chance to look at them yet, but, but there's only a 30-day comment period and that started February 20th. That's for the board and for residents, so I'm concerned if they're not out there to be reviewed. We don't have much time.
Well, I think, I think we can get an extension because I put in a written request for plans, for paper copies. As opposed to it all being digital. And actually, I did send those plans to Department of Housing and Community Development. Because I felt it was appropriate for them to look at the floodplain maps and understand the magnitude of. How much of the rail line is gonna be underwater at elevation 12. And I also have several calls into MBTA to find out, they have this resiliency plan. And they're in the process of looking at their facilities to try to figure out what's gonna be underwater and what's not gonna be underwater. And ironically, they. They only do an assessment of like the parking lots they own, they don't do assessments of adjacent parking lots. Like the parking lot downstairs is, downtown is owned by, what is it? 20 Beach Street or 40 Beach Street. 40 Beach, and so a lot of people use that, but that's included in the vulnerability plan. And if you look at, I wanna get Tiffany to get the electronic version online because it's pretty sobering.
Yeah, so that, that, my point being is that if we could get the links that are there.
Right.
Out and let residents and the board look at these for comments, 'cause again, it, it said that, you know, we had, the community comments is 30 days and that would end March 20th, so that's.
Can I make a suggestion that at least maybe you look at them and start a comment for the board?
I'm happy to, but again, I think a lot of residents have been wanting to see these, so I think if, that we need to get it out on the town website, because if you can't extend that date.
Right, if you know what needs to, if, at least, even if there's a link to something that we could send to Tiffany directly, so she can put that up there.
It's in the letter.
Yeah.
What kind of comments do they look for, I mean, the maps are definitive, I mean.
Not necessarily.
Well, they're preliminary, they're actually preliminary maps.
Oh, they are.
They want comments on the maps?
Before, before they're finalized.
And.
They want comments on the, on the map, so.
I mean. Actually.
Well, some people may challenge them because insurance rates will go up.
This corner of town hall is in the 12.
Of course it is.
Elevation 12.
Okay, so comments on what the floodplain is, so to speak.
Right.
Right.
Defined, okay. So I should put it on the agenda for the twen, the 13th?
Uh, probably.
Unless we get that extension.
And, and hopefully we would get these maps by then.
Get them or.
Well, we have the link for the electronic version, but I, I think, you know, some people like to see it in paper.
Okay.
But it is pretty sobering.
Well, let's get the electronic ones anyway.
Pardon?
Yeah, they're in the.
Let's get the electric, electronic ones posted.
Right, right.
I guess I just had one final thing too. We started the conversation earlier, I was just gonna put it out there that I was going to contact Mary Ann and Chris and get this, our subcommittee going again.
Sure, great, good.
Great.
Sounds good. Okay, let's beat the parking ban, you have to adjourn.
So moved.
Before you adjourn, I wanna make a couple of comments. On this flying business. Call a notice of violation of building permit, terms and conditions under whatever the flying code is. Each calendar week, following the date of this order, will be a new offense, if not corrected. To the satisfaction of the building inspector.
So I think our bylaw actually even ups that, it says every day.
Yeah, it says every day.
It holds every day.
So every day is a new offense.
It's like a parking ticket, it's, believe your car all year, hopefully. Give you another ticket.
A notice of violation of.
I think I like that language, I'm gonna write that down.
Terms and conditions.
Yeah.
Under the law, it will be outlined.
Yeah, it's in the, yeah.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.